Okay, maybe I'll just take a few minutes just to give you a little idea of what we're going to be doing tonight. The block ledge applicants are going to be presenting what their project is. We're at the point now where I think they've really nailed down what they want to do, how they want to do it, and where they want to do it. We will be allowing them to give a presentation, we'll let them open the public hearing. What we'd like to do is ask you to use the same as you can because there's a lot of things we want to cover in this. We understand that it's been submitted to the planning board a list of questions which we are going to be sharing with the applicants and with all the planning board members. We were going to schedule a re-commencement of the public hearing for this project on October 15th. What we're going to do instead is schedule a workshop to go over all the questions that have been raised with the applicants, the applicant's consultants, and our consultants to see if we can't really get the details worked up on what's being proposed, what we're looking at to review, and what we might ultimately be able to approve. It should be open to public to listen. The workshop is not a public hearing, we're only here for listening and participating. At a next planning, what we're going to do, we're going to be reopening the public hearing for public comments once again on the block ledge project. I think it's safe to say this is going to be a rather exhaustive review with the pipeline action under SEACER. There's a lot of work that has to be done, so these are not going to be the only public hearings by any means. If more information comes in, the well-being public record will be available to all of you to review. You are always more than welcome to submit questions to us, and we can then share with the applicant. Also, the planning board will be able to discuss the work this through. It's going to be an exhaustive process, it's a major project. You know, there's a lot of community interest and a lot of concern. People have the day to like to know exactly what's going on and what the impacts will be. I just want you to know that we take it very seriously, it's going to be an exhaustive process of review. Having said that, we have one more minute before we start the public hearing.
What is your date of the...
The workshop will be October 15th. At what time are we going to be doing the workshop?
October 1st is the workshop.
Oh, October 1st is the workshop? Oh, October 1st is the workshop. It is only you to listen to and watch, yes, absolutely.
That would be a working meeting between board and...
But would you all allow to be the six fifty first?
Absolutely, absolutely. And what time? At what time, Gretchen?
Six fifty.
Six fifty. Will be reopened on October 15th.
November 19th?
It will be November 19th.
Gretchen will give us the right dates.
Gretchen will give us the right dates. We want to give everyone plenty of time to develop their questions, to review the information that's going to be generated, so that everyone's in a good position to understand what's going on. Yes?
Can we, the list of questions that we submitted, does our company read that into the meeting today? Are you requesting that perhaps that not happen?
Well, we'd like it not to happen, just because I don't think any good will come of this one because none of us have been able to see it and we don't have one of the room of digest or have any response. I can assure you while you're reading them, there will be one basis for the workshop on October 1st. And we're also sharing with the applicant and expecting them to provide answers in the very best of their ability to all those questions.
You can officially submit that list to Gretchen?
It's already been done.
They may go from order so that we have people that are speaking come to the microphone and identify themselves for the record.
Very good. We do have to have a recording list and we do want to make sure we have everything online. So, yes.
Can I call for everyone in the office to hear what the questions are though? I mean, I know you will.
Excuse me, could you come to the microphone and identify where you are for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Mel Sherratt, I live on Akron Hook Road. And I just think her reading them would give us a cohesive place to start with what questions we're already talking about. So people are going to know who to ask about this and that.
All the questions are available to you now. It's a public document, so they're all going to be able to do the public.
Okay, I was just under the understanding that it was going to be read into the record.
Well, we thought given all that we have to do tonight, now once we're able to respond to the questions, and we do have them.
I don't think we were expecting a response. I think we were expecting from everyone here to hear what our concerns are.
Well, we have a pretty good idea, it's similar to ours in general. And this will discuss it later.
I would just like it to go on the record that I would have preferred it to be read like I was told.
Thank you, I have so noted.
It is on record as well for anybody who comes to the office and review what they want to as well. So, anytime, very mild hours, anybody can come to the office.
Is the date November?
19th.
Okay, now I see we're in time, so without further ado, Mr. Veriski, if you'd like to introduce the project or continue the program.
Good evening, my name is Ron Veriski, I'm an consulting engineer at Lancer Bear in Hightuck. And I'm here representing Hudson Valley, Ryanbeck, ELSA. Is that a little louder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that microphone working?
Microphone, can you hear me? Is the microphone on?
No, no.
Yeah.
It's on, apparently.
It sounds like we're getting up some...
Side?
You almost...
Side?
You may have to hold it.
It might be time to buy mine.
I'll do my best.
You don't even know how to hold it, I don't know.
Is this any better?
Yeah.
Thank you, hon.
So, I am here representing Hudson Valley, Ryanbeck, ELSA. Also with me this evening is the owner, Charles Blaken, who's already here. He's also with us this evening. And two of the project, two other project team members are here. Matt Rudicoff, who has handled the several aspects of the project, environmental, archaeological, traffic. And then also George Rottenhausen is also with us this evening for his counsel for this particular project. So, my intention is to do a brief outline of the project and cover, you know, just quickly cover the items and, you know, the important parts of what the project is and turn it over to Matt. Matt will elaborate on a few things and the same thing with George Rottenhausen. So, this parcel, formerly DAYTOP, is located on the west side of Akron Hook Road and on the north side of Hagerd Hill Road. Parcel size is little under 136 acres, 35.6 acres in size. The specific application is for subdivision, site plan, special permit, and also I believe there's a wetman's application too, right? Matt, wetman's application. So, starting with subdivision, the reason for the subdivision application is to create, and so it's a minor subdivision. It's to create two parcels. And those two parcels, lot number one of the, on the subdivision, will actually include the existing manor house that's on the property, along with several of the other outbuildings that were included, that are included on the property. And that, and the purpose of lot number one is to create a country inn. And so that country inn, the size of the country inn will be 12 rooms for the country inn. Lot number two, and oh, the country inn's size is 28 acres in size, as required by...
Mark, what are you talking about? What building? Which one's the manor?
Doug, what I'd like to do is, well, Mike wants to...
Yeah, what I need is to have the, let him do his presentation and then we will open the floor for questions. We have questions as well to ask, but also we do need you to open the microphone because we want to keep the record of exactly who speaks and what they ask and what...
Just point out something. There are things that are violated. We're trying to hold this anyway, can you do that?
So, also, so...
Thank you.
Two parcels, lot number one, 20 acres in size, fine John, Akron Hook Road. Will include the majority of the existing structures on the property and it ultimately will be a country inn. Lot number two, which is the balance of the property, will be 20, will be seven, four clustered units of condominiums. So, a total of 28 units on the balance of the property. So, lot number one, I'll just quickly go along with parcel configuration. For lot number one, includes this here. So this is lot one, the balance unit. You can see the majority of the units are located in the suburb portion of the property with one of the units, and they're all labeled, clusters are labeled. Cluster number seven is located on the northern part of the property. Along with that, so there's multiple aspects of this application. So I just described the subdivision. So the reason for that subdivision is to, the building requires that there be a separate parcel for the country inn and a separate parcel for the condominiums. And so this is more of a developed site plan that shows the layout of the existing buildings along with what's being proposed on the site. So, there's a, the project tries to, has tried to utilize the existing network of roadways on the property, existing water and sewer which exist on the property, and at the same time, you know, considering the environmental aspects of the entire property. So what I'll do is briefly go through what, you know, the specific guidance with regard to development of the property and that are typically considered in this type of application. So what I'll do is I'll start with access. Access for the site will be from Akron Hook Road. There's two points of existing access on Akron Hook Road. One on the north side and one on, I guess, we'll just say it's south of that. It's the existing triangular access that is, that was built and built in for the top facility. The main access for this property, for this project is going to be on the north side. It'll be a modification to it in order to meet the, some traffic requirements and site line requirements. And so it's just pushed a little bit to the south and allows access into the, into the property. And what we'll do, it's twofold, it will split. And it'll have a separate road network and access for the condominium units. And then it will also split and go to the, the country inn. Country inn is going to be located at the old manor house. Those, the rooms for the country inn are going to actually be split for two structures. They'll be split in this, 10 of them will be located in the original manor house. And then two of the suites will be located in this structure further to the south right alongside the roadway, which is now a lot. The, I think that was the chapel, right, Matt? It was former chapel. The existing access, which was the main entrance for DAYTOP, is going to be used as emergency access. The sightlines for ingress and egress in both directions are inadequate for, to use it as primary entrance. We took a look at modifying that, but felt that there would be too much set disturbance associated with that. So what, what it is acceptable for is emergency access. And so there'll be, you know, there'll be a gate associated with it that only, it's only used in the event of emergency for emergency vehicles. But it allows ingress from the north to the south, and then you can also exit to the south. But once again, it's just for emergency access. Next, next component in consideration for this project, you can see when you look at this site plan, there's, you know, physical features are shown on the site plan. So there's parkage shown on the site plan and then also wetlands. The wetlands have been identified and delineated in detail on the property. And grid care has been taken in the development to respect those wetlands and to, for the most part, stay away from any disturbance of those wetlands. Some areas are just, just required improvements to the, to the road network, require some minor disturbance to those wetlands. But those wetlands are identified through, through the property and then there's a, and there's, so there's two types of, two types of wetlands on the property. Those under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers and also the New York State DTC. The Army Corps of Engineers wetlands are also under jurisdiction of Town of Ryanbeck. Town of Ryanbeck has their own wetman org. And so those are associated, those are outlined in detail. All the wetlands in this section are Army Corps or Town of Ryanbeck wetlands. Wetman F, which is shown right here, is the only wetman that's under the jurisdiction of the New York State DTC. So you can see when you take a look at this, the majority of all the condominium development avoids those wetlands. Minor disturbance from this first section of roadway entering into the property just in order to reconstruct the roadway to meet town requirements for ingress and egress. The same thing can be heard with the, with the country inn lot. Since the majority of road networks that exist are going to be utilized, very minor disturbance to any of the, any of the wetlands associated with the project. Next item to consider for development, you know, when you're considering engineering for the project are water and sewer. So the existing DAYTOP facility had their own water supply and water company associated with it, along with sewage treatment facility. So with regard to the water supply, there are existing wells that are located right here, center of the site, with some minor treatment that's required, that was required at the time when DAYTOP was operating. Under this scenario, water, the water system will need to be improved and expanded. And so when you're considering development of a water system, there's typically three components that you need to consider: a source, storage, distribution. And in this case, you know, the applicant has undertaken, I'll start with storage. I'll start with storage, which is usually, you know, a critical component for developing water supply on this type of project. And so some initial testing has been done. Applicant has retained a hypergeologist to evaluate the existing water supply and has also, not only the existing water supply, but through work with my office, developed estimated demands for water supply for the project. And in doing that, it's to determine that, you know, additional source capacity will be needed to continue on with the project. And that, that source capacity is determined by regulations that are, that have been set by the New York State Department of Health and its local branch, the Duchess County Department of Health, and also the New York State DTC. And so, as I said, also, you know, in consideration of this water system undertaking a analysis or some testing of the existing wells and have determined that need to develop, you know, develop more source capacity. So the hypergeologic firm has investigated the site and has determined additional well sites to look at for further source capacity. And when I say additional source capacity, I think one, depending on the size of the new wells, it's maybe one or two wells that's part of, that's part of the, part of the analysis that we're going to right now. And that, that detailed information has been also submitted to the Duchess County Department of Health. They have reviewed our documents with regard to water supply and sewage disposal. Initial engineers reports been submitted to the health department have been in agreement with our estimates for water demand for the project. And so now the next step is to, is to further develop the source capacities of the, of the wells for, for the project. So I said, you know, three is four parts, source, storage, and distribution. And so, and also when you're considering source, you need to also consider domestic water supply and also fire flow. So we're taking both of those into account. Second item that I mentioned is storage. And so, you know, looking and developing the site for on-ground storage, non-elevated storage, and evaluating the best way to do that with, you know, some storage tanks and also pumping in order to do that. And then finally, distribution. Distribution would be for providing, you know, potable water to the buildings associated with the country inn in one parcel and also the condominium units. Next, I'll just briefly touch on sanitary wastewater disposal. As I mentioned, there's a DAYTOP had an existing sewage wastewater treatment plant. And that's located just a little bit west of the, of Akron Hook Road, it's located in this area here. Sewer treatment plant is here, and then there's a permanent discharge through a stream right here. DEC permitted that discharge for DAYTOP. In the process of coordinating discharge standards with the New York State DTC for this sewage treatment plant. And then also, in addition, on behalf of the applicant, also have retained a consulting firm that specializes in sewage treatment plants. And so, we're in the process of evaluating the existing sewage treatment plant and not only the sewage treatment plant, but also the collection system associated with that. Obviously, looking at the existing collection system as we would be with the water system and any new collection system that's required to serve the new condominium units. So I touched on access, I touched on water and sewer. I'll just also mention, George will go into it a little bit later, but the both water supply and wastewater disposal. I've been in touch with, as I said before, Duchess County Department of Health, but also the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority with regard to operation, takeover and operation of both of those systems. Other considerations or other components, design components that have been considered for the project. So I mentioned access, water and sewer, which obviously is stormwater and secondary related to the project. And so the plans that have been currently submitted to the town, I haven't gone on yet, I won't go through all the plans, but consider the, you know, regrading of the new roadways and some of the existing roadways for the condominium units, all that, all the regrading and drainage informations has been, has been prepared and will be reviewed by the town's engineering consultant. You know, consideration of stormwater management, stormwater treatment, both for water quality and water quantity are being, are being considered for the project and being utilized. I think the, I think what I'd love to do is introduce, I guess George, to speak briefly on some legal issues on the project.
I'm George Rottenhausen, Rottenhausen Shaw, working here at the project team. Just a couple of quick comments about the legal structure. It's very simple. We've seen other projects' ideas in the past, this has now been simplified. There's simply a adaptive reuse of the historic structure on the site and a modest now development which is supporting that adaptive reuse. But there's no connection between these two projects beyond the initial development by the same developer. The 20-acre parcel, which is going to be the country inn one, will be ultimately owned and developed by the country inn one department. The HOA property, we call HOA, condominium property, which is one lot, will be owned by the HOA, the condominium association. So we have only two lots, it's a minor subdivision, taking this fairly large property into two lots. And at that point, you'll have two separate owners of those two lots. Each of the condo unit owners will own their own condo and they'll have the shared interest in the common areas. So, at some point, we need to have agreements between the HOA and the country inn, which will cover things like the transportation that goes on the roads that go through one of the other's property. For example, going through the smaller property, going through the country inn property will be one of the access routes going through the condominium association properties. So there needs to be cross-agreements for those issues. And maybe some trust agreements needed for the water and sewer. And some of those lines will cross over both properties. And then the only other thing I'm going to mention was the Duchess County Water and Wastewater has agreed already in principle and in concept to take over the entire system as soon as it's finished being constructed. That's water and sewer. There'll be separate agreements with Duchess County Water and Wastewater on the water and separate agreement on the sewer. They will have complete authority to approve each of those systems. They won't be done until they're inspected and approved by the authority. So we're going to be going through approval by the Duchess County Health Department as well as by the engineers for the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So once you have all those approvals, those systems will be turned over at no cost to Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So that's why I wanted to say it's fairly straightforward with projects. And Matt Rudicoff, the planner of the project, has spent a cover of the environmental issues.
Thank you, George. Good evening, everyone. You know, the SEACER review is a broad look at the project's potential impacts, both on natural resources and neighborhood compatibility. Mark had said this is a special use permit, so in that case, neighborhood compatibility is particularly important thing. And I'm going to sort of address some of my comments around that aspect of. Mark already talked about the compliance with zoning ordinance, the land uses themselves, the open space requirements, the coverage requirements, setback requirements, and even the clustering requirements, which is so important in being able to minimize disturbance and minimize impact on the neighborhood. One of the most important aspects of neighborhood impact is visual impacts. And it's sort of obvious, but just to reiterate, no new structure will be visible from Akron Hook Road. Everything that's new is going to be up and behind the hill. What will be seen from Akron Hook Road will only be the rehabbed and reused historic building, the chapel and the gatehouse, and then the repurposed dormitory building, which was the DAYTOP dormitory building. Additionally, in terms of the new development, that's going to be the new residences. From Troy Drive, for example, the nearest block ledge residence is going to be 450 feet from the nearest residence on Troy... from the nearest residence on Troy Drive, and that's through 450 feet of forest. Likewise, on Primrose Hill, it's going to be between 450 and 650 feet of undisturbed forest between the nearest new structure and those homes on those streets. So that's been a very conscious decision to try to make this happen as little impact as possible. Also critical, and obviously to be part of your comments, is traffic on neighborhood character. And a full traffic study was done, and is in the submitted material for everyone's review. And that was done by Craig Manning, engineer, who's done a lot of the studies in Ryanbeck. And they analyzed the existing traffic first, they did counts on the existing roads in the vicinity of the project, they looked at the intersections, they researched the accident history, and they evaluated the site distance, as Mark had said, for the two entryways, because it's where those cars come in and out of our project, where existing traffic vehicular on Acrohook Road, but also pedestrian and buyers. We'll have something to say about that because we're designing our own entryway. What was interesting is when the engineers did the traffic impact analysis, from 28 residential homes and from a 12-room Country Inn, the traffic impact in the peak hour, which is a Friday afternoon, is 36 cars in that one hour. So if you assess that traffic on all of the intersections, there is no change in level of service. All of the intersections in this area, except for Hagerty and Route 9, are Level of Service A, and they're rated by volume of traffic as very low volume rural roads, that's sort of the designation. And so adding traffic to that kind of situation has a special character, so we did something else. In addition to level of service, we also looked at waiting time at the intersections, which is another measure of how does new traffic affect sort of what's like going on in the community, like how long after waited intersection? And this amount of traffic had no impact, appreciable impact on waiting times. With regard to habitat, the habitat assessment, which is all of the flora and fauna and wild and endangered species kinds of evaluations, that really evaluates all the habitats and all the plant life and all the wildlife on the site. We did extensive field studies, which are documented in the reviews, and we also combined that with the town's own biodiversity work in there, the biodiversity study, as well as with federal regulations, state regulations, and the town of Ryanbeck's own regulations, which govern sensitivity ratings, which govern the location on the site, which govern the kind of methodology that has to be used inter-reading out, so all those kinds of things were incorporated. And I think that a good way of sort of summarizing that in just these few minutes is that some of the site's most sensitive environmental resources, and there are sensitive environmental resources in terms of species, plants and animal life, but just for example, no development activity is proposed within 500 feet of the project site's button bush pool scrub wetland, which is the most important wetland on the site, and that's up in the northern boundary of, the northern location of the project site. Additionally, no development proposed within 550 feet of the nearest intermittent woodland pond, and those are very sensitive wetland features, identified as a primary habitat of concern, as a conservation habitat of concern, and those are for salmonines. Also, within 200 feet, there's no development on the wetland repairing corridor, which is important for migration of turtles that are on the site. Of Rockledge's 15.3 acres, we're only disturbing .08, that's less than one-tenth of an acre. And as Mark said, that's primarily for the realignment of the intersections to achieve safety. So safety considerations really outweigh those, really the minimalist wetland impacts. I think another aspect of neighborhood compatibility really goes to the point that George was making, which is the overall adaptive reuse of this site. New development has been minimized to the 28 new residential units, which are crucial for the project's feasibility. And what has been preserved are the national register buildings, which are adding to the character of the community, the quality of the ambiance of the whole community. And so we think that's a very important aspect of this project, reusing existing roads, reusing existing stone walls, so all of the impacts are minimized to the greatest extent possible. Mark has talked about water and sewer, and even on water and sewer, the involvement of the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority was because the town expressed to us its importance of not, of there not being any risks to the town, future risks to the town, and how those systems are operating. So we've tried to address those kinds of things, and in the environment review, all of those subjects are there, and presumably many of your questions will address those as well. So Mark, is there anything else you wanted to say, or George, anything? So I think that's it. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your comments. I'm responding to you.
If I could sort of just ask a couple of questions. Perhaps one of the, I think the things that is concerning a lot of people is exactly the function, the role of the Country Inn, how it's going to function, what it's going to offer, who it's going to offer to, how it's going to operate. If you could perhaps give me more detail on that, it definitely would help.
Sure. It's a private 12-room Country Inn, and it will have amenities, but only for guests. It will serve breakfast, but only for guests. Guests at the inn will have the ability to arrange in advance for a caterer to come onto the site and create a meal for themselves, or their guests are with three. One group could rent all 12 rooms and have a catered dinner, or one chef at those facilities. The amenities are going to be the spa for guests only, and I think it's going to be commercially run. The principal owner has other residential transient rental properties for vacations. There will be no, what I mean you're asking about, so the fact that the homeowners will not be transient rentals, or will not be airbnb breakfast is a separate subject. Is there anything else on the inn that we should be talking about relative to how it operates, or that? Was there any other aspect that was particularly a question that I think I covered?
I think that we wanted to know, certainly I wanted to know exactly who the customer base will be for this, exactly what the function is, and assuming from what you're saying, it's going to be basically a lodging facility.
We will be a lodging facility, a commercial lodging.
And what's offered there will be for those people lodging at the Country Inn.
The amenities and official facilities are only for the guests of the inn, that's correct.
Thank you. But it's not an event center, which is not permitted in that district?
No.
Because I know that was another one of the things that you proposed on time.
Well, that's why, that's why we didn't design the facility, eliminate some of those facilities from the interior spaces of the inn.
I think that's one of the questions right now.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Does anybody know what the occupancy of the former DAYTOP was?
Yes, it'll take, it'll take a couple of weeks to get everyone to know.
Okay. Are we increasing it significantly from what that was to what it will be? It seems like the new occupancy could be in the neighborhood of 75 people, right?
In the 12-room Country Inn?
No, no, on the whole property.
Oh, on the whole property, well, 28 residential units. I think it's going to be equal to or less, I know that traffic wise, it's a slight increase in DAYTOP's traffic, but DAYTOP didn't have that everyday in and out traffic of residential facility. They had employees that wanted three shifts, and they had, you know, a few deliveries of food and supplies, so they were not a high-traffic facility. So the traffic has slightly increased, but in terms of overall occupancy, Mark, can you give a for that, in terms of the water demand, possibly?
Yeah, in terms of water demand. The sewer treatment facility was originally permitted for, I think it was 28,000 dollars a day. Our proposal right now, you know, calculations for potable water is approximately 16,000 dollars a day. And it, you know, it's my recollection, and I have the record, but I thought, you know, the DAYTOP facility with regard to water demands and wastewater generation is fairly close to that.
Okay. And also, you mentioned that the water supply was to be underground?
Yeah, it would be through, groundwater supply through wells.
How is, well, you said it's the storage would be underground?
You know, storage, I said, storage would be, but it will not be elevated.
Okay, how is the system going to be pressurized, then?
So we're actually in the process of developing that right now, but it will be pressurized to pumps.
To pumps and extension, or what the?
So we're looking into the, you know, the possibility of, you know, using variable speed pumps and to minimize the amount of stores that you have to have through that. But, I mean, that's, we're in that design process right now, Eric. So the key, one of the key things is that, I just alluded to it before in the initial presentation, is, you know, it's consideration of, so there's domestic water supply, and then there's also fire flow demands. And so, if you were to, you know, try to handle the fire flow demands, you know, through the entire system, it'll change the storage requirements, obviously. And so in this case, what we're doing here, we're going to have separate storage facilities in each one of the condominium units, and also in the Country Inn. So it will have its own fire suppression system associated with it. Therefore, all we have to do is handle domestic water, and it's, you know, it's, you know, just punishing the fire suppression system, or, you know, it's not something that needs to be, you know, resident in a tank that also handles domestic water. It's a great way to, you know, separate it, and so you can minimize the amount of disruption you have to develop for.
Okay. And Duchess County Department of Health issued a floor confirmation letter, so the rejected the water is approved by Duchess County. And is there a sewer treatment facility on both parcels?
Well, it's, no, it'll be for one parcel, so each parcel will utilize the existing sewer treatment.
And that's not a problem, when I thought that had to be the same, had to be on the same parcel?
George speak to that, but we, our initial conversations with water and wastewater authority, George can elaborate on the board, no, it's not.
Okay. And this, it'll be provide tertiary treatment for the local water stream. And what is going to be the use of the former dormitory?
The former dorm, the former dormitory is now going to be a owner, storage area, a maintenance area, a gardening support area, and I think that, I think that's it.
Okay. And last question, is there, I mean, other than keeping the acreage to a minimum and covering that wetland, is there any reason that this parcel would be the one or two looking like a southern voting district?
Yes, there is. So part of the, so when you take a look at your zoning code, so for the RC5 zoning district, there's a formula that's, that's used for developing a number of allowable units on a certain piece of property. And so, as part of that formula, you need to consider a lot of certain physical aspects of the property. And in this case, so the components that you need to consider in developing the unit count are wetlands and slopes. Okay? And so, those need, those need to be removed from the, you know, from the, you know, from the acreage that can be considered for the, you know, development of those, in order to develop the unit count for the condominium units. So that, those portions of the property, the slopes greater than 25 percent, wetlands, wetland adjacent areas cannot be considered to develop the unit count. However, those areas can be considered as developing the acreage toward the Country Inn. And so, if you take a look at it, so now you see the rationale.
That's irrational, essentially. And what is the reason for not extending the borders of that parcel to the, why is it completely contained inside to the northwest and to the west?
Because that is the area, because it, because it's exactly 28, so zoning code requires 20 acres for the Country Inn, so that, that parcel configuration, which has frontage and needs setbacks for the existing structures, is exactly 20 acres.
Sharon, you have the questions. Richard? Pat, what do you?
No, not at this time.
I'd also like to, for the record, I had recused myself from participating in this project, and was not sent to the board at this time. Okay, this will, we'll have to open it up for public comment. What we need to do is to come up to the microphone, identify who you are, so we have your record. We want to make sure that we get all of your comments, because we're going to allow the framework and the basis for the workshop that we're going to be. So, yeah. And we do have six more public hearings to answer, so if you can be as succinct as possible, we will.
I'm not, you know, I'm on your list.
It's a very good, yes, I see it.
Thank you very much, it was a collaborative effort. No, I just wanted to, for the benefit of neighbors who haven't been involved in the neighborhood decision.
If you have your individual results, we'll be back.
I'm Karen Keywell, and I am at that fourth step in Acrohook Road. And I've been, some of you may be getting emails from me, but haven't met me before, so I'm a good person to talk to if you want to contribute a specialized effort. So I was just going to, for the benefit of people who haven't been involved in the conversation that went into creating this in the first place, I just wanted to say, we are, this is, as a representation of a group of neighbors, our questions and concerns about the project, they stem largely from the potentially detrimental impact of the rapid and significant increase in the number of homes along narrow winding Acrohook Road, particularly if the transient visits, visitors were to exceed the permitted amount for the proposed Country Inn One. And we have asked for a meeting with the applicant and the board, and it sounds to me like you've already said you're going to accommodate us with that.
That was the first one.
And then, and then, just so, for the record, the concern stems from, if I could, Rockledge may have a detrimental effect on our neighborhood, if the inn and condos together will serve as a large number of, will serve a larger number of transient visitors than just the Country Inn One guests. The second major concern, there are only four, it'll be flag, no, water usage and wastewater treatment, so we have some additional questions for that, neighborhood disturbance during construction, which is perhaps something that could be spoken to a bit more this evening, and then increased traffic on Acrohook Road and other town roads. So, and this I will be recommending to you, and I guess you can go over to the public for my talking with me.
Thank you. And you'll be available to the public. Everything that's submitted, everything you can get is all public record, including all the maps, everything that's come forward, we got it, you're invited to see it.
Thank you. My name is Helen Shaw, I live on the Acrohook Avenue. And I know a lot of the questions that I have are being advanced and prepared, and the people that put that together. I do have a question, though, about the two separate lots. What happens if the inn goes under, since it's completely owned separately from the other piece of property, and it's this big gerrymandered piece of property? What happens then?
Good question. It will continue to exist as a separate parcel, and when you parcel, you know, basically the pump, business, pump plant, I've been on that, I'm sure I could tell you. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn, I live in the 273 Acrohook Road. From, Rockledge Development plans to use this access on Acrohook Road, because of the narrowness of the road, they can't move the road, remove easier access to their property. Acrohook Road is a tertiary road, extremely winding road, and well limited access to many footers along the road. It cannot support heavy truck, truck traffic and delivery attempt at the building spot. spot. I mean, there's, oh, look at the service, and personal vehicles for the hotel, bar, restaurant, spa. Ackerman Road cannot support this kind of activity without creating an extremely dangerous situation on the road, and a serious change to the local environment. There's a great deal of wildlife crossing the road at all times, day and night. Also, the road is used by joggers, bikers, carriage pushers, and dog walkers. Supposedly, the shop, curves, hills, and blind spots on the road. The increased traffic of service vehicles and large building equipment will present a great danger to the people and animals who use the road now. Rockledge Access should be through Primrose Hill Road, not Ackerman. Primrose Hill Road is a major divided road that courses between two state roads, Crown and Nine Chain. If you change the intersection of Primrose Hill and Haggerty Hill Road from a wide to an actual crossroad, cutting into the Rockledge Park, possible back there, it would be a safer and more direct access to the property. This would eliminate the danger to the residents of Ackerman Road. The houses seem to be appropriate to the property, and it seems that they don't want to bring the road in from Primrose Hill Road, because that would bring the truck traffic, and all their new expensive houses. They would prevent the residents of Ackerman Road with the noise and danger of this traffic. We are all dependent upon the same water supply. Right now, the water is excellent. It isn't clear that studies have been made about the effects of all of this building and the supply of water needs, uh, hotel, bar, restaurants, spa, on the Ackerman Road in the area. I respectfully request that the zoning law deny the Rockledge area until these issues are addressed and solutions are found that would not affect the lives and well-being of the Ackerman residents.
Thank you.
Carol, so my wife and I are land on Ackerman Road 20 years ago, and promised our order would remain unchanged. So, I'm relying upon her promise to you folks to keep that Ackerman Road going. My name is Michael Feinberg, my wife and I live in 349 Ackerman Road. My two principal concerns, water taken care of, the other is the concern about transient leasing, whether that be weekly, monthly, seasonal. Mr. Blaken, we discussed this about three or four years ago when you hosted us at the property, and you had offered, or one gentleman offered, to put some kind of restriction into bylaws. And I mentioned then, I just wanted to reiterate, that since bylaws could be changed by unit owners, I think it would be safe for, were a restrictive covenant in all the deeds prohibiting transient leasing, however that might be defined. So, it could be written still in that in the paper. That's it, thank you.
This, this could also be one of the issues we discussed at the workshop, whether maybe additions could be made, or between, do any approval resolutions such that it could be someone who are.
Who was first?
Exactly. We'll have our attorney at that workshop, so we'll have some guidance in exactly what steps we might be, or should we go towards an approval or an evaluation.
Thanks.
I'm Scott Kostopski, I live at 364 Primrose Hill Road, around the corner from this project. What I see is a great American house of a scale of the Newport cottages, that will be turned into a 10 to 11 room guest building with no kitchen service at all, because kitchen service is not permitted under Country Inn One, unless there's a kind of genius of Enron to turn this into a viable business model. The thing is absurd on its face, and I wonder, therefore, about the separability of these two projects. That, if it is deep down that this inn has no commercial possibility, and no investor after any of the work is done, will the condominiums on this gerrymandered piece of land be permitted to continue construction by this board? And one would hope not. I have one more question, which is about increase of the permeable surfaces through all of the additional road building, and what effect that might have on flooding, and wondering if a study would have to be done to ascertain that possibility. Thanks.
Clearly stormwater, that's one of the issues in terms of danger, is a major issue in terms of the site plan development. And certainly our engineers working with their engineers to ensure that the stormwater, we just made a primary concern in a situation like that. And, and, every now and then you get one of those storms, or probably you're going to overwhelm any type of system, but for the most part, yes, if required, this stormwater can, and the site can be handled appropriately. That would be part of any condition of approval.
Very good. But remember my first question?
Yes.
Thanks.
Gary Lachlan of 20 Haggerty Hill Road. We immediately have joined the Rockledge property. We have a common boundary of several hundred yards length along the north and northwest edges of the Rockledge property. Given that we've got a pretty comprehensive list of questions and a workshop to address them, I'm going to keep my comments really brief at this point. We welcome the resurrection of a property in our immediate neighborhood that has been, that is developed, but in fact has been essentially derelict for a number of years. Our concern is the compatibility of the proposed project with the rural residential character of our RC5 neighborhood. Rhinebeck zoning law allows Country Inn Ones in RC5. It allows multifamily condo developments in RC5, both with special permits. The zoning law does not permit Country Inn Twos. What we're dealing with tonight is the combination of a Country Inn One, a condo development, and the recreational facilities associated with both the inn and the condo, all operating on a single 135 acre plus parcel contiguous. This has the makings of a Country Inn Two. Whether this operation, what distinguishes this operation from a Country Inn Two is not the nature of the physical facilities on the property, because they're very common to what has, what a Country Inn Two possesses. It is how these facilities are operated. The planning board clearly has the right to impose conditions on the special permits for the inn and for condos. And I believe that with appropriate conditions effectively enforced, any possibility that this condo inn complex turns into a defactored Country Inn Two can be effectively minimized. So, once the workshop is done, and once this is reopened for public comment on, what, November 19th? Okay. We'll be presenting recommendations for what those conditions ought to be, and how they should be enforced.
Could I suggest you submit those for our workshop, so we can discuss them at the workshop? Because we're going to have our attorney there, they'll have their attorney there, they'll have the principal consultants there, and that might be a good time to try and work over those.
We will certainly attempt to do so.
Yeah, begin the process of publicating those conditions and how they might be appropriate.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Hello, my name is Robert Strickstein, I live with my husband, they have One Troy Drive, which is directly adjacent to the property. I'm, I've been at work with the group, so I'm signatory, so to speak, of all the questions that Karen will be putting forward. But just even, just two or four little items that I specifically wanted to put out, based on the conversation here today. The gentleman spoke about agreements between certain covenants that would have to be formalized between the Country Inn and the condominium development, and to reference the respective roads and usage and this and that. But I really want the board to make sure they look very deeply into that, because there are operational facilities with respect to sewage and water that are going to be shared, and that both parcels are going to have to share any responsibility to the maintenance and operation, that it can't, that can't be left to the one and not to the other. And as I read the documents, I'm unclear as to that division of responsibility to the maintenance, particularly of the sewage system and the groundwater system. In the discussion today, they made reference to the inn and the facilities being only available to guests of the inn. And I want very specifically that it be defined to not include the 200 guests who might be invited to a wedding, or another kind of catered affair. Is that the type of facility? This is going to be, I mean that to be specifically addressed as a neighbor who directly joins the property. They've not really elaborated on the facilities of the spa, so it's kind of hard to evaluate the impact that's going to have. So, I'd like to see the board address that. And the final thing on my list is the clear cutting of the woods, and if there is a plan to open the views to the Catskill Mountains, or, you know, how, how do, how does that get addressed, these development plans? And then how does the town and the board enforce that and make sure it's happening?
And we do not allow clear cutting, and it's not specifically specific in construction of the project itself. So, I think jury turning is not something the planning board will approve.
So, they, they will need to show on their plans where they want to clear?
It's probably out there.
Okay.
Very definitely, it's going to have to be very specific, or we'd be in a position to consider approval.
Okay, that's already been done.
Okay, let's see if it's gone well enough.
Hi, Robert Lang for Troy Drive, and my comments are related to making this project two entities. I own a condo at Hunter Mountain, and one of the mistakes we made as a homeowners association a few years back, when times got tough, is we sold our common, uh, common parcel and, and adjoining clubhouse to a private entity. And now that private entity is, is letting the, you know, facilities and everything go completely, you know, dilapidated, and now we have an eyesore, and we, as a homeowners association, have no control over that. So, I'd like the developer to, to allay my fears that something like this won't, won't happen here, where we have two, two entities, we have a homeowners association, and we have an inn. And it's related to your question, if the inn has a problem, how do the homeowners, you know, not end up with a derelict structure? That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to that?
I'm David Weiner, I do 306 Ackerman Road, which is toward the north of this project. And I have two questions. I just really wondered about this by accident from my neighbor when I was walking my dog in the road, and also riding my bike on the road. I, I guess there was a notice I received. I just really appreciated that if anyone who might be affected by this received something in the mail, just any of the needed, so, I just, the project. And maybe we didn't, I missed it, but I'm, you know, here to talk about this, so maybe it's. The second question I have, and maybe I missed something, it sounded like the Dutchess County, the wastewater fee, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, does that then mean that the cost of that will then be borne by the counties for operating it, and affect our taxes?
I believe that the operation cost will be for the users, just the way currently the water system in the village was after the handling, and things like that. The users will be in charge, that's my understanding.
I moved into this area of, of areas of, I would be conservative with wastewater.
We will definitely look into that.
A cost of, of our drinking.
Just really quickly, to that last point about the Dutchess wastewater, the water authority, would you mind, um, Rockledge team, talking to that for one second? Because I think people are confused about it, that it's, that it is actually a private entity, and it is not a sewer and water supplier of the town of Rhinebeck, or the county of Dutchess. Just a little bit more about that relationship.
To answer your question, the Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority is a separate post benefit corporation established by the state of New York. And they have responsibility and own a number of water districts in the county, a number of sewer districts as well. So, what we have done is gone to them, asked them if they would be willing to own and operate this as a, what they call park county district. In other words, the whole county is deceptively a district that this authority has responsibility for. So, we take this part of it, which is this private, and it becomes essentially a county district, a park county district, as it's called. So, that becomes the water district, or it becomes a sewer district. So, by ownership and operation, that means they will own the wastewater treatment plant, distribution lines, the collection system, they will own the water plant, water treatment plant, and the water distribution system. And they will own it when it's completed, when the construction is completed by the developer. One developer develops all this. And then they will get title to it, free of charge. So, they will start off owning this system at no cost. They will then operate it, as Michael just said, with user fees. So, everyone who pays, just like any other water system, like Hyde Park or Rhinebeck, the user pays for your fees. Normally, you're also paying the capital costs. In this case, you don't have to pay that, the people living here. But the, maybe this will be paid for by the user fees, and the county will then collect the money and use it over time. They're, they're very experienced at this, and that'll be covered by the agreements which we agree to develop under their authority and their approval authority. The systems as they are designed, and then turn them over to them, you know, basically the turnkey operation.
Excuse me, if the Country Inn, pardon, if the Country Inn is a failure, and the condos fail to sell in great number, how does the cost of operating such a water system be divided amongst the remaining condominiums?
Well, any, any system is supported by the users, so.
Excuse me? I lost my pen.
So, the, uh, the user fees are distributed over to the property owners. So, owners, whether they are there or not, will pay the user fees, and it'll be assessed probably by the number of bedrooms, and I'm not sure how it's going to go in this case, but Dutchess County will work that out. In the end, Dutchess County has responsibility to keeping the system running. They are responsible to the public health, they're responsible to the health department, they will keep it running. And it's not a large system, actually, 27 units. And so, the answer is, it gets to keep, the Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority gives us the assurance that this will keep running. It's not owned by the homeowners association, they're not responsible for repairing it in the sense of borrowing money or anything of that sort. The county has the authority, has the authority to borrow money when they need it for repair of the system.
Have taxpayers, expense.
No, taxpayers, no, the authority borrows money, and pays it with user fees.
Right, so then everyone's user fees go up.
Correct. No, no, no. The 27 homeowners here will be paying for the water and sewer they get, and the owner of the, of the, country inn.
But if there are only four?
Oh, come on, now. You could say, what if one, you know, what if the whole thing fails? The, 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 the answer I'm giving you is that the county. The, the, the answer is given you is that the county Water and Wastewater Authority will own this system, she responsible for keeping it running and maintaining the public health and they have the authority and the resources to do that. What we've done is ensure that this does not have a bad impact upon the neighborhood by having homeowners responsible for system again to fully, since this happened elsewhere. And that's why we worked with the town to make sure the town is not holding the bag on this. Lovely, taxpayers are not holding the bag. And we're planning a project which we think will be successful.
Who owns the bag?
The authority. If, if the.
Water and wastewater, again, the, so it goes to the taxpayer.
The authority has its own financing. In some ultimate sense, the government is always all taxpayers, sure. We're not designing a project to fail.
I guess one question that was, that was just listening in my ear was wondering, is he intended to do a phased build out of this? In other words, would there be the condominium built first and facilities, would the condominium be built, take the way the condo yard is, you've done the pre-phases and is there?
It's not presented as a phased project.
It's not a phased project?
I presented that, like, it, I've often opened my, we have.
Something to discuss at the workshop.
We'll discuss at the workshop.
When it goes to the question of the desirability of 27 units versus 24, 22 or 21, and I think we had in previous meetings discussed, would you be building all 27 in one build out or would you be basing the condominium? And we don't have to answer it tonight, but I think it, it does get to some of the questions being raised about how sellable, how quickly the gardens, as you know, have done in phases. And as they've sold out a phase, they've moved on to the next phase, which has given them some level of comfort. So it's, it's not to be answered tonight.
We will discuss that.
Yeah.
Is the, should we, one of our first, are the fees for the water uses based on usage or just the ownership of that holiday? Will they be metered, will they?
The, the authority will have to work that out. Then they will decide how this works. And we will then do the offering statement in response to what they decide to do. It's not just use, it's going to be maintenance as well. So they have to.
Be based.
Formulate that will give them enough money to keep the system operated properly.
Wait, you had a question?
I don't have a question, I have a statement relative to surge in water. If any of you are familiar with the Cove on the south end of Rhinebeck, that was a private, that was a privately owned system. The owner went belly up or walked away from it, I don't know the exact results. You know who got stuck with that water system? The town of Rhinebeck.
Yeah.
Okay? That's why I'm an advocate of Dutchess County, because they have the ability to continue to run the service. The town of Rhinebeck does not. It's not our job. So that's why we're going and asking them to please get it into Dutchess County water. They're better at it than anybody else in the area.
And they actually now are the ones who own and operate the system down in the county of Cove. So it was a huge savings for the taxpayers of the town of Rhinebeck when that happened. So it does, it does make a difference. It's something that we have insisted on from the very beginning of this project, that this be handled like Dutchess County water and wastewater to ensure that the town, the taxpayers of the town will not under any circumstance ruin this project from that standpoint, the water wastewater aspect of it. Anyone else? Yes?
Betsy Saros, please, people are coming over somewhere. Regarding that tree they're cutting, if more is cut down, then they're supposed to, is there any penalty?
Oh, yes, there is. And we may be keeping an eye on it. Projects are just so, we can do inspections, the zoning enforcement also will also be committed to inspect the site improvements, things of that sort. I, I genuinely feel that this one will be quite well enforced.
We, we lived here three years ago from Massachusetts from a town that went condo crazy and the penalty for cutting down trees, it was kind of like, who's replace it with another tree? So you cut down a big year old tree and you'd have a sapling and it was ridiculous.
No, we did it very seriously.
And we also have the desirability through the planning process to recommend additional screening should we decide that's important to the overall success of the project.
Anyone else with a Z? Yes?
I'm Edna Lockman, I live at 23 Hill Road. There was a question asked earlier by the planning board chair that was never answered. And it was, who is the target audience for sales of the condo units? How will the units be marketed to them and how do you expect them to be used?
Is that the comment on that tonight?
I, I am Mr., I mean, we are.
Charlie, you have to go, be on camera.
Charlie Blake, developer. And look, we want this to be a high end, peaceful, quiet, you know, we want fine people who will pay significant amount of money for a really nice home. Our, the people in the inn, we plan to charge a nice amount per night. It's not meant to have people rent out their places and have parties or do Airbnbs or rent them out, you know, weekly. That's not what we're looking for. We've changed the whole concept of it to be a refuge and a place where people will pay, have a quiet country existence, even though it's condominium. And the inn is supposed to just be a part of that and not, and, and the amenities are for, you know, like this spa, somebody asked about that. That's only going to be if people want it. There's not going to be anybody manning this spa. It's a facility that people could have a massage or take a sauna, but it's got to be ordered. Everything is, there's, it's not about having a restaurant, it's not about having a spa operational. Everything is à la carte and it's all by request and it's all supposedly low key. If I'm going to sell a condominium for a lot of money, which I'm hoping I will do, they're not going to want a party next door, they're not going to want, you know, big weddings and stuff going on. They want peace, quiet and a nice place to relax. And that's what we're hoping for. That's the audience we're looking for and we hope to do the chapter.
Thank you. Any other questions this evening?
Quick question about the, it was mentioned that country inn, one cannot have a kitchen facility, is that correct?
It can't have a restaurant. You can have, as a bed and breakfast does, you can have breakfast.
Okay, so the kitchen facility could be exactly the same as for a restaurant, is that correct?
But they can't have a restaurant, you know, not the only, other than guest function.
Guests per price.
That's it.
Okay. So with the, the facility itself, there's no inspection on that?
You think they would just build what they need for the guests for breakfast?
I think you could put a commercial kitchen in your house if you want. Spend an extra $200,000, $300,000.
Any other comments this evening? Okay, what I'd, what I'd like to do is stress that as questions come up, as you have, is please submit them to us, particularly before the workshop, because that's going to be the basis of a lot of what we're going to be trying to do, this workshop, to solve these questions and try to come up with good answers. If we can't come up with good answers, then we, I think we can do more work. So please, don't think a question needs or must be asked, submit it anyway. If it doesn't happen, I've heard it to be it two or three times, that's fine. The workshop will be on October 1st and we will be reopening the public hearing on November 19th. Yes?
I'm John Franco, I'm a, from Rosell. I did some research once about condominium development and condominium taxes, because I was thinking about, I believe for the condos opening.
Gardens?
Yeah. The air assessed as a multi-dwelling unit, the price of the entire unit being what you would find in a multi-dwelling parking complex in the local environment. So each of those condominiums is taxed at a specifically lower rate than they would if it was a home. So each of these huge half million dollar condominiums is not going to be paying the same taxes that I am, significantly less. Can the board look into that? Because if they're paying 25% of the taxes that I am, then I don't know how that is. Just general speaking.
My understanding, John, or Jordan maybe knows better, a number of years ago, I guess condominium development overran the desirability for condominiums. The state legislature passed regulations in terms of taxation, which gave condominiums that sort of tax rate and hoped that it would stimulate sales. And I guess it stimulated sales and tax rates still exist. I believe that's what happened.
And the town takes some specific interest in that?
Well, we can certainly speak to our legislative representative and all of them and say it's about timing everyone's tax on, you know, sale or, or set market value basis.
Well, maybe a multi-dwelling unit in Rhinebeck on top of a hill would not be used in a multi dwelling system. So it would have been a small, multi-dwelling town.
Yeah, but that, that's, certainly that's true in and of itself, but unfortunately it's the state did it and the state's going to be a condominium.
Hi, Greg Robinson, Cricket Lane. I have two questions. You mentioned how far away from Troy Drive and Primm Road that the closest units were going to be. How close are they going to be to Cricket Lane, Cricket Lane?
I'll do that, Tom.
Okay. The second question, how large are the units going to be?
Each individual big possibly, and it's not exact, like 2,000, 2,200, 1,800, anywhere from 1,800.
So around 2,000 square?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. 500 feet to your house.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. And if you have questions, if you want to know what's going on, you can always call us, you know, we're very desperate to help you. Everything is very simple, isn't it? It's a variable community, you know, that you're older than something I'm saying. Okay. I'm happy to go in.
Yeah, it's going to be a late.
We have a couple of things we have to do, the first thing we have to do, and I'd like to hear a motion that on the 1st of October at. The workshop is October 15th?
It's October 1st.
October 1st.
6:50.
Okay. I'd like your emotion to set up the workshop.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
I'd also like a motion that we will be reopening the public hearing on November 19th at.
7:30.
At 7:30.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you all. All right. Moving right along. Our next item is a property, Lee's Long and Dated Web's proposed addition to their house on Russell Avenue.
So we're here tonight to have a vote here on Lee's Long and Dated Web's proposed addition to their house on Russell Avenue. It was a site visit last week and there were a couple of questions about the plan. We submitted a revised plan to address those, my understanding. We added some dimensions to the driveways and structures, communicated the internal layout of the first floor, the floor plan of the position. We show where the former shed slash, they call it dollhouse building, where it was, was on the survey, took some measurements and indicated where it is now, so you can see that. We indicated the trees on the west side of the site. And there was a question about solar panels in the dimensions, although I'm not very sure what the question was. All the dimensions, panels are here, these are the plan B dimensions and then in sections, so that's the length along the roof as well as the height above the roof, should be about six inches.
Okay. Who did the site visit for the, Eric and?
And I, too, right? So we did it separately, so why should I go first?
I'm excited that we're Bob Donaldson from the CADWAC. It's an old house at the end of Dead End Street. I did send it, I didn't have to, yeah, I didn't have any information, but I haven't read back on that. But it's got the, it looks like some improvement in the area. It's got the addition of the carport and it's got the small porch on the front with the picket fence. So I think it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Ken?
Thank you for making the corrections and updates on the plan.
I agree, I think it's a, you know, fine solution to their, to their problems, that building in the back wasn't going to make it for what they were hoping it would be. One question I have, that, that's, that's in its final resting place now, that building? It's a. There are no plans to move it. Okay. And, and I, did the foundation under that was iffy before, is that been addressed at all or? It's mine, I haven't really looked at it in detail to take the measurements the other day, but my understanding was they resupplied it a little bit in the moving. That's what kind of got things a little sketchy last year, but I think it's all settled as far as it being there and nobody's going to worry about it being one way or the other at this point. There was some discussion about swapping some land area to get it all on the parcel, but then that, that side track, so. Not worth doing.
That's a matter for a different.
Different thing, yeah. It doesn't have anything to do with this. Yep.
I have a question.
I did have a note, were there going to be stairs from the deck down to the ground?
No, the access to the deck is through the building upstairs.
Okay.
If it ends up being a deck, that's kind of in, whether it just ends up being a carport or, that's kind of budget related at this point. Ideally, it would be that access through.
Be a nice spot.
A CADWAC report.
Good evening, Robert Donaldson, Constellation Advisory Board, Waterfront Advisory Committee. I joined Sharon on the site visit and submitted another for consistency with you prior to tonight's meeting. The components of this project are compatible with the applicable city area statewide specific policy that I've mentioned in the report, Emmett Policies 24, A, B, C and Policy 33 of the Towns LWRP. The architectural style of the addition in the existing structure along block the carport, fencing and roof mounted solar panels will not present any discordant viewshed issues from the adjoining properties on Russell Road. While the WAC found that the roof mounted solar panels could not have any negative visual effect on the community character, the WAC asked for more information from the applicant or from Hudson Solar in order to determine if such panels are designed not to reflect any glare, onto the adjacent properties and roadways. And can you answer that question tonight?
No. And we would need some more information, most likely from Hudson Solar, they are installing solar panels as to are they reflective and is there coming from them? That information is not available.
Thank you. Questions by members of the planning board? I will open it up to the public. If you wish to speak and have questions, please come up to the microphone.
Yes, hi, I'm Richard Kopischansky. I own the property on either side of this project and the property across the street. One property is a little cottage, the other property is two vacant lots. The building across the street was an old farmhouse that's been home since 1980. I have a few questions and a few concerns. If, if indeed we were in a lawsuit about moving that little cottage, which is mostly on my property, if we were in that lawsuit, can we still do this process?
Yeah, so it would not be something, if you're asking the zoning, it's not a zoning issue.
Okay. Okay. What's, what side of the roof, where will the solar panels be?
South side.
South side, is that here? Or this is here? Will any trees be taken down because of that?
No.
No trees will be taken down?
Correct.
How, how, what's the distance between the existing house and the end of the carport?
It is 23 feet.
Do you know how, um, far the big land is from the end of that building?
In the proposed structure?
No, from the existing building.
From the existing building, it's about 40 feet.
So we're well in. Okay. They, they proposed, their plan was to use, make an addition as a studio and office space with a sink, bathroom and storage mezzanine. Will there be a shower?
There is a shower.
There is a shower. Which is not up here. I just want to, it says it's a 300-foot addition. Is it 300 foot from the ground floor and then 300 feet from the second floor, then 300 feet for the carport and then 300 feet for the deck?
No.
So the whole thing is only 300 square feet?
Correct.
So the ground floor is 1,500 square feet. For what?
115?
115, what? 115.
It's 12 by 20, it's about 240 square feet.
240, so it's 240 down below and 240 on the second floor.
240 and 60 is 300.
Well, the set, it's, I'm not following. This is the addition.
240 square feet on the first floor.
Yeah.
60 square feet as a loft.
Oh, it's a loft, so it doesn't?
But that's all interior to the building anyway, so.
No, I'm just, I understand. Okay. I just, uh, their original, when they came to zoning, the original plan was to, a conversion of the shed that's in the back was a conversion of an existing non-habitable contributing structure into a one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling unit with connection to existing water and SDS. That was the original plan. They wanted a place, another dwelling. My question is, if indeed this is accepted as a, as a studio and office space, and if down the line we can prove, or it's proven by someone, that it is actually an Airbnb or a rental, what will this board do?
The board won't do anything, the zoning enforcement officer will have to cite them and either get the Airbnb knocked out and convert it back to what the planning board has approved, or jurisdiction is issued and we go, the judge will tell them what to do.
And then, okay, so there, there will be action. Not be by the zoning board, but by the, okay.
The zoning enforcement officer is the one who has the enforcement authority. Planning board has a deal and approval of the, planning board has an enforcement authority over what it approves. That's the zoning enforcement officer's responsibility, the building inspector's responsible.
But you, 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 if it goes forward, you're approving a studio office space with a sink and bathroom?
Correct.
You're not, you're not approving a shower? Yeah, because it's not on, it hasn't been asked for.
Well, if it's not on, then we can't approve.
Okay.
That's correct.
This gentleman just said there was a shower.
There may need to be an adjustment in the application.
I think, um, I think that's it. I, I, I don't know how the solar panels, I mean, because I, I just know the area so well, there are a lot of trees on the other side. I don't know if the solar panels will work, but I think we'll be able to find out. Those solar panels would be looking right at my house across the street, which is an old house built in 1870. It's not a great thing to look at, but I understand we have to move forward and solar panels aren't the major thing. I think the major thing would be for, at the end of this dead end, for us to have an Airbnb. I own a lot of properties, remind you? And I rent them long-term. And I have people, young professionals, workers of the, of the area. I have people who, who help build a community. And the Airbnbs don't do that, as far as I'm concerned, because it's a two-night stand or three-day stand or whatever it is, but it just doesn't build a community. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't become that.
Well, that's certainly not what we're approving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to make a comment on the solar panels that were proposed for the roof. From Bob and Adam there, we could look at the roof and the trees that are across the road, there's, there's, there's so much drizzle with the trees. The sunlight should be great. It's just a small roof, small section on the roof, so I don't think it would be that much.
I want to get into the previous question on the solar panels. They did find the cut sheets on what I was given, information wise, and the front glass on them is, does include an anti-reflective coating. Imagining that that's part of their standard operation, the solar panels installation and state vehicles. That is what's reported, is that they reflect.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Just one thing.
Of course.
Just one last thing, sorry for taking so much time here. The letter that Ms. Long wrote to the board suggesting what they're doing is that they live in an existing house, currently a three-bedroom, two-bath senior resident. Does the tax record show that it is a two-bedroom house? Because my recollection shows that it's not a two-bedroom house now.
Like, you mean a two-bedroom?
Uh, yes, sorry, two-bedroom house.
I do not know what's in the assessors.
So we can check that out.
Oh, absolutely.
I can check it out tomorrow and if there's, it shows that it's not, I can let you know that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions from the planning board? Okay, it's a type 2 action, therefore there is no further secret review required, therefore could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second? Um, favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have a resolution here for you to consider. At the request of a number of planning board members, why don't I just hit the high points rather than all of it? So I'm not good all night. Okay. In respect to the application for special use permit, we find and through the site visits in CAD that the proposal will have no adverse effect on the community character, architectural heritage of the neighborhood, and find that the actives will maintain the structural form because of the original character. And we will grant the special use permit, conditional upon the site plan approval being granted. In respect to the application for site plan, we approve the application inclusive of the site plan and architectural drawings prepared by Tim Lynch dated April 13, 2018. And we will authorize the planning chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions and the requirement within six months of the adoption of this resolution. Those conditions being submission of the above cited drawings in the form and numbers specified within the town code, set as be modified to lesser extent by the chair, including prior distribution requirements, including their own hall, the necessary stamps, seals and certification, and the verification that payment has been made to the town or run with any fees and or reimbursable amounts due to the town related to the review and processing of the application subject to this resolution. Could I hear a motion to approve? Could I hear a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? Hold the board, Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
No?
No.
I will go, guys, well. You're good to go. If you have any questions about what is required, the final stamping and signing, questions or more, we have to help you out.
Send the resolution in.
And instructions will go with it as to what is required, stamping and signing. Okay, next on the list, Bay Street LLC. Yes, it's a special use permit and site plan approval. I'm not going to be taking this one.
Good evening, Mark Kominsky, representing Gretchen Moore and Lance McMahon, also of Bay Street LLC. Application is for site plan special permit for property located at 120 Paul's Road. Property size is just, it's a little over nine acres, it's not 3.7 acres. Front of John Paul's Road, right here. This site plan shows existing conditions on the right, opposite position on the left of these new ports. Property is, uh, main development of the property is in the southern end of the, southern end of the pond. Existing residents, driveway residents and improvements on the east side of the residence and what would be the rear of the yard to the north of the, you know, and several, you know, and landscaping associated with that. To the north of that is an existing pond and then to the north of that is all vacant and wooded land, forested land and the northern boundary of property is cedar hectare. This particular application is minor. It's, uh, it's basically redevelopment of the rear of the yard with a new pool, a sport court, a pool house associated with the pool, a spa, a little bit to the, uh, a little bit to the north of the proposed pool and landscaping and landscaping features associated with the property. The pool house, proposal for the pool house, there will just be a bathroom and changing rooms in the pool house and, uh, that will connect into the existing wastewater disposal system itself, which is also shown on the plan. Located to the west of the existing residence and south of the driveway. Submitted detailed plans to the planning board at our last meeting. There's been no changes to the plan at all, just some additional details with regard to some secondary grading associated with the sport court, very minor in nature, once again trying to, uh, you know, consider the existing physical features of the property. The improvements require removal of a few trees on the site that's specifically in the sport court area and then also, obviously, you know, removal of, there's an existing pool, fire pit, those are all to be removed and now included in part of new development of the property. Total disturbance is probably about three tenths of an acre on the site. Once again, everything is restricted to the, to the rear of the yard.
Who did the site visit for this one?
Uh, I did it, Woody.
Okay. Edna?
It's a very lovely property and it will be even lovelier when it's completed. And it's true that it's, it's not, you know, made to work, but while it's going on, there's going to be a lot of dirt piled up temporarily and then moved around to regrade and presumably compact for the sport court because that whole area is being leveled. So I do have some concerns, even though you're outside the 100-foot area of the pond, I think it would make sense to make sure that there isn't any sort of muddy drainage going down to the pond because there is a slope there. So I think a silt fence is probably a good idea. What is the plan, Mark, for getting to back there with the equipment? Look, how would you get there from the driveway?
Uh, it's, uh, it's going to be on the south side of the house.
So all the movement of big trucks or equipment or excavators on the south side of the house?
Correct.
But even so, you're gonna have to get at the area to excavate the new pond, so equipment's gonna have to come around.
That's correct.
So, uh, I still suggest that there be a space silt fence.
I actually, silt fence is shown on the plan.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that. Other than that, the project site at the rear of the house, it cannot be seen from the road, it should have no effect on any nearby property or the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Woody.
I'm over there and I see no planning board concerns.
CAD report.
Hi, Vanessa Kitchlin, in case of the CAD did the site visit and regarding the equipment, they wrote in their report with the construction of lawn steps, lawn steps adjacent to the house leading to the pond, it is recommended by CAD that the applicant continue to use permeable materials within the 100-foot buffer zone, not to cause any environmental degradation to the existing pond and wetland area. Additionally, it's recommended that the construction and use of construction vehicles in the 100-foot buffer zone be limited. And also was recommended that in times of extreme weather, during torrential drought or hurricanes, that the pools be covered to minimize potential spills of chlorine entering the pond. The project designer stated that the pool will have an automatic cover and the CAD supports this inclusion in its future.
Thank you. Any questions by other members of the planning board? Any member of the public want to speak to this application? Okay. Once again, reaffirm this was type 2 under secret, therefore we are positioned to both public hearings, but I have a motion to do so?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll hit the high points again. Okay, in respect to the application for special permit, we find proposed work and intended uses are consistent with the general standards and proposed work, classified as major excavation, is consistent with the standards detailed in section 125, 68 and M. And we grant the special use permit, conditional upon receipt of site plan approval. In respect to site, in respect to the application for wetland permit, based upon review of submitted information, including an edge of pond field survey conducted by John Decker, time proposed work, consistent with the objectives stated in chapter 120 of our wetlands. And we grant the wetland permit, conditional upon receipt of site plan approval. In respect to site plan approval, we approve the application inclusive of site plan prepared by Mark Kominsky dated July 16, 2018, and the set of plans, building elevations and architectural drawings prepared by Wesley Stout Associates, Brian Walker, and dated July 16, 2018. And authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of below conditions within six months. Submission of the above cited drawings and forms, numbers specified in the town code, as may be modified to lesser extent by the chair, including a pair on all required stamps, seals and certifications, and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to town agreement related to this review and process.
Excuse me, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing with regard to this, so, look, to the, so the applicant could begin site construction this fall. And I just note that we're still in the process of getting approval from the Dutchess County Health Department for, only for the pool house. So I'd like to be able to do, you know, to work on the other aspects of the project and then obviously the pool house construction and connection to the sanitary, the contingent on the health department approval for the. on the health department approval, for only that's specified, if the board would consider that.
What do you think?
Is this one, was this one application?
Well, I, I brought this up at our last meeting, John, you know, at the initial presentation, just to, so that, you know, site work could begin on the other aspect, you know, so demolition could occur, and then, you know, site grading for the other facilities begin, and then anything associated with the pool house will be, you know, that would be associated with approval.
So it's a practical, how would you envision that happening? There'd be, there'd have to be a separate building permit for the...
Yes, just for the pool house.
The application is conditional on approval, the building permit for the pool house needs to be a separate building permit, and granted on receipt by the, the building inspector of approval of Dutchess County.
Do we, do we not know, is it possibly going to be approved just the way it is? It's going to be, it's going to be pumped from the pool house?
That's, that's what we're working on right now, whether it's grabbing, whether it'll be a home stadium associated with it.
Why can't we just simply make it a contingency?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
But I mean, before they start building, I mean, they're going to start excavating some stuff, but before they start actually building it, then they're going to have to build a new facility to go forward with that.
But, but we're not in a situation where the department health says that you have to have a home system, or clients aren't going to do it.
No. No, they, they'll, you know, it's, wherever it's going to be reported by the health department, they'll do it.
Because that would be the biggest concern for me, would be having bifurcated project, and then having the outcome changed by whatever the decision is from.
No, I've discussed it through the board.
So we could make the pool house a contingent of the pond, Dutchess County approval, getting a building permit, choosing structure, the pool house and its sanitary facilities in connection with existing septic systems. Is that, is that...
Yes, but that'll have to be spelled out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that, yeah. We're going to work on that. Gretchen, just give us an, an okey-dokey, so we're good on that. Does everyone understand what we're doing?
Yes, I think it's a very pragmatic approach.
Did I ask for a motion to approve yet?
No.
Second?
Second.
Thank you all. I'll pull the board.
Aye.
Edna, Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Okay. Edna, if you want to sort of set your stuff up, we're going to hear any more discussion.
Our next, our next public question is for a addition to historic structure in the NMR district, LWRP, and existing, existing house, historic structure.
Hey, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening, Paul. This application is for a residential win on the back of a, of a house at 631 River Road. It's for the removal of an existing shed from the 1960s, which is now, and for the addition of, of, to replace the kitchen that is there now, and to add a sunroom. So we are removing, we are requesting to remove approximately 550 square feet and build a wing that will be approximately 1,700 square feet for a net addition of about 1,100 or 1,200 square feet. The, the weight behind the house right now contains the kitchen and a bathroom. There is no bathroom on the second floor. In my advancing age, I think that's going to be important, so I would like to move the bathroom that is on the first floor up to the second floor of this addition, and continue it on through a, sort of a dining area and the living room sunroom.
And who did the site visit for this one?
No, Woody, you're on.
I didn't.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Anyone else speak?
You do.
I do. Okay, this was a while ago, I did write something, so I'm going to read it. The house, first of all, is not visible from neighboring properties in the summer. In the winter, some visibility is possible to, to the north, but the addition will not significantly alter the current view of the house. Several trees will have to be cut to accommodate the addition, including a large catalpa. The applicant was asked to indicate on the site plan any trees to be cut. The new addition will have a full basement, and so will require excavation. The applicant is to provide information about the amount of material to be removed. The existing foundation is stone, the concrete foundation for the new addition will be covered with veneer stone. And the existing siding on the sides of the house is wider than that on the front. It is going to be retained, including a very interesting flat board section that covers a window opening that was removed. The new addition will be sided with slightly narrower siding to match what is on the front of the house. Do we have the information that was asked for about what trees are going to be cut?
Could I correct about the catalpa tree is not going to be removed?
It's not going to be cut?
No, we're going to carve a slight well. We are about 12 feet out from the tree where the addition ends. I love that tree, so we're going to do everything to save it. We're, we're at the edge of the canopy. If the tree is healthy, which a tree service is going to determine on Friday of this week, if the tree is healthy, we will build this well with a little stone inset in order to protect that tree. The element between the house is the only other tree, except for a dogwood, which I have to take out anyway, because it's on its last life.
Okay, and then the excavation, how much material will be removed for the excavation?
I'm sorry, Stephen Falk has that information, but I didn't, I don't have it. It, I know that it's, it's, I think seven and a half feet down, 30 by 40 feet, and there'll be insulated concrete, or insulated concrete forms made by Quagmire, so I know that we're, we're going down seven and a half, eight feet, and there will be a geothermal field laid underneath, and then probably...
Eric is attempting to, if you're out on many yards.
12 hundred.
Thirty, 35 yards.
Karen?
Anything I can add?
Nothing to add, I think it's for the final addition.
CAD, WAC.
Good evening again, Theresa Billardi from the CAD to the site visit, and see the report. We basically found no particular issues in the policies in the LWRP regarding this project.
Thank you. Any questions by other members of the planning board? Anyone from the public who should speak on this, this application? Okay, this was an unlisted action under seeker, so I have a draft seeker resolution, and the high points are that we determine that this will have no negative impact on the environment, and as the WAC has stated, that they see no inconsistency with our, our property visualization plan. Therefore, in passing this resolution, we will authorize the chair to execute the first page of the short EAX and direct the planning board with the distributing file, the short EAX and make the declaration annotation in the intersect porting of the seeker from today, and in the linking regulations. Could I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion for the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For the site plan approval, and I'd like to mention too, that one area variance was required, since the accessory dugout will be in excess of the 1200 square feet permitted. The ZBA will be meeting Wednesday night when they have an approval resolution for this, since it was an unlisted action under seeker, we can give conditional approval to this, subject to the variance being granted Wednesday night. So just so you're all aware of the plan. So, we will approve the application for site plan review and approval, and based upon the next six, 10 months, the following, the following conditions, sufficient to be above cited site plan, with consideration of filing distribution requirements, including all seals, certifications, and stamps, the granting of the area variance by the ZBA, void of the rules, case number 967, to permit an accessory structure larger than permitted under chapter 125, only 125, 618, and payment of any reimbursable amounts due to the town agreement related to the review and processing of these applications. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Yes, John.
Just, if you can add the language, the standard language on incorporating the conditions that the, the, the POs issue.
Do you need to provide that to Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, I will pull the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So as soon as the ZBA, Wednesday night, give you the variance, you have the permission to come up with a final site plan involving necessary stamps and seals to be signed, and you can then remove the strata of their building plan.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Our next one.
This is Catherine Haskins Fisher. This is an approval resolution under subdivision to, for reapproval of a previously approved subdivision that typically filed, and therefore, to reapply, so we have another 60 days to get it done with the county clerk.
Yes. I think I summed that up nicely.
That sounds very nice. Does this email for the board, or is that somebody's photograph, like email, or something?
We've all seen it, and all know what it is, and we approved it. So I have the resolutions to reapprove it, so we can have another 60 days to get it done with the county clerk. We approve the reapplication for the Haskins Fisher minor two-lot subdivision, not on alteration, and authorize the chair to stamp and sign the subdivision plan on the applicant's satisfaction of the low conditions and requirements of 100 and 200 days. Stamping of the subdivision plan is not jurisdictional subdivision or for private purposes only by the Dutchess County Department of Health, submission of private factor line, carrying all required stamps, seals, and certificates, and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable due to the town agreement. In that no new lots or building sites are being created, and if not applicable to this application, either those provisions of the town and subdivision regulations require to set aside of the parquation land, cash union of land payment, or those provisions of the town zoning permit for rental housing. The applicant was also advised on the requirement to the 60th day of the day of stamping with the chair, repeat app, file, and let us be filed with the Dutchess County Department of Health.
Someone had a card.
Yes.
First of all, I couldn't hear it down on board, you said, we're neighboring property, unless there was a little sign that we happened to pass by, and don't we typically get notice when something happens on an adjacent property?
Since this was a reapplication, which was already approved, we did not...
I never got one from the zoning board.
No, we said, I never sent one.
Oh, you didn't send out all you want, I never got one. You didn't send out one to me, I'm an adjacent property owner.
What's the name?
What's the name?
Burnett, B-E-R-N-I-T-T. So, we go, I listen. I couldn't understand a word you said, what are you trying to do with this?
So this was approved, what, a year ago, almost?
Yes.
On board?
Yes.
No, after, after Tom bought it, we went through a process of proposing, he had like a five-acre roughly?
I know that.
Oh, you know, you know it.
I know, and I live next door.
Okay.
And obviously, he couldn't put a set back.
Right, it, it's, it's all clay.
I understand that. Okay, so what's he trying to provide an end to?
Okay, so it was five acres and 23 or whatever. Okay, and then he's modified this line for the smaller lot, to now go all the way back, allowing, and so now the two lots become compliant with the minimum size of the zone.
He's only got two lots.
Yeah, he has the two lots.
All right.
He's just revising his lot line, so they're, they're almost equal after, go to 12 and 15. And then his septic system, which is a fill pad of this variety.
All right, please, I don't, I know.
You know all about it.
I know how other people down the road, I've walked the road.
Uh, it goes along.
I never heard about it before, until I saw the little sign.
And you were there a year ago as well, didn't hear about it then either, that's, that is, that you were...
I'm not a native, I've only been here 30 years, okay? So he cannot subdivide the lot next to me.
This lot?
Correct.
Um, well, we're not proposing that now, but that is, it's a separate issue, I think, if someone in the future were to propose that.
Somebody tell me why, I know that'd be a zoning issue. I feel, I wonder why we'd have the planning board, it shouldn't just be a zoning issue if you own all the land.
No, it's a subdivision process, and therefore, it's the planning board approves subdivisions and not on alteration, not the ZBA. The ZBA approves variances.
Okay. All right, well, I was on the zoning board once, it wasn't quite like that. All right, so I'll be, still 10-acre zoning in, in this area?
I believe so.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
So we're assuming that they can only fit one more house in between himself and Mylar?
Um...
Without some major zoning issue.
You mean, if somebody in the future wanted to subdivide, actually subdivide?
Yes.
Right, for a total of 27 acres, technically, three, it might be, two, you might not achieve three without going to the zoning board for a undersized lot, right? Because we're under 30, even with both of them. So I don't, you couldn't get three without a variance. You have two, and, and to get a third, you, you need a, nine for a lot size.
Substantial, uh, site plot issue of potential.
Yeah, I, I don't, as inside, nothing to do with this application, I, I wouldn't foresee someone trying, you know, if he said, would you suggest I try to subdivide this, I'd say no, you know, because it's all clay, the septic systems are this big, because $8,000 of fill.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. This will be, this, this will be, someone will have to really want a home to even build there, because the cost is so high because of septic.
I know, it's not to swell right in the beginning.
Yeah.
That's all was my concern, because there was potential, you could probably carve it out enough to get two houses in there. And I don't think that's what we want. I don't know what you folks have seen, what is under that, now we can be able to say it, Carried House, which was very nice to do all, but I don't know if you've seen what it did behind it. Now, I know I wanted to put a new faucet in my kitchen, and I got tortured, because we're in a story.
This, he got tortured as well.
I don't do that.
It was plenty of torture to go around there.
Yeah, yeah, it was only a free approval process.
It was a very lengthy approval process.
Why'd you torture me so much? Why'd you do that?
It's the same list, it's, it's very difficult, it's the same list that applies to every application, so there's a, it's, it's kind of hard sometimes.
I don't want to see if he was trying to do it for...
I don't, I don't believe so, but, yeah, just guessing. This is all I'm focused on.
That's all we're doing now.
Oh.
You're not his son of a...
He's not, I've worked with him, to supervise him in, in proposing that, whatever your opinion of, yeah, it's his design idea, fill up, yeah.
I guess, do we have a motion on the floor? That's a promotion, to approve it.
To approve?
Second?
Second.
Okay, I will pull the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody? And I vote aye. So you have, I press staff, it's only got 60 days.
Thank you, so we will get the records of Congress sets back to you for standing with Mylar.
Okay, the next one is Michael Nicola of Boomer Hollow. Myself? Anyone here for that? What we did, we got today, because we got a report on the digital analysis for Boomer Hollow, and typically what we ask for is to get things two weeks in advance, especially because they want to do a sort of PowerPoint study thing and that sort, and we received this up. And we received that this second hearing, and really weren't positioned to set up for a PowerPoint, and at the same time, two weeks does not give any less time to look at it, let the public look at it. So I don't think the applicant would entertain having that, that presentation tonight. So we need to continue the public hearing, I think, until?
October fifteenth at seven thirty.
Okay.
Is the public hearing second still open?
Uh, yes, you wish to make a comment, then I will move to public hearing for October fifteenth.
Robert Donaldson, I live at three oh seven Villa Road. Back into July planning board meeting, it's public comments. I have two solar transformer utility meters that are going to be installed on the property, and the gentleman from Hudson's Soul, I believe it is, I estimate that, but there's not any information about the size, pictures, what have you, so not now. I said, can it be presented? He goes, yes, I'll get it. I was here for the August meeting. Have you received it?
I don't recall seeing this. I would have to say no.
I specifically request that information, so how do we go about having the owner of the Hudson's Soul producing the requested information?
Uh, if you look at the information, I look forward and on the request that we prepared, and you're ready to discuss it, and you're done, so it will be on the fifteenth of October.
Does this have to do with the visual impact?
Yes. Okay, I think I have a motion in a second. Okay, I'll put it forward. What we'll do is just a regular vote. We're going to move this to October fifteenth at seven thirty this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Uh, we have another public hearing. This is Inahoe, and he's here representing.
James O'Leary.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm telling you for daring.
Don't apologize.
I'm not sure if I'm a hundred percent up to speed on exactly where, where we are. I know that there was a site visit, but it's historic. Historic nature of the house.
Good way.
So the, the project is a small addition. It's about three hundred square foot addition to a house that can't be seen by any neighbors. It's pretty, it's pretty set deep back in the woods. Um, it's a, it's a room that's going to be something of a sitting room off the kitchen. The reason why it got brought to the board is because the house is on a historic registry. Um, and, you know, our contention is we're, the owners really love the historic nature of the house. Unfortunately for the house, the historic nature is entirely inside the house. Um, there's two, two really beautiful rooms downstairs. The upstairs of the old Dutch house are in, you know, are intact. From the outside, the house has been pretty, pretty beaten up and, and sort of changed and adapted and added on to, so there's nothing except for the historic Dutch pitch of the roof that's really visible from the outside. So the addition is just being tacked on. It's an addition to an addition, so it actually doesn't even touch at any point the historic structure, so our contention is, is that it's really not impacting the historic nature of the house at all.
If we, if we accept this.
Okay, then I.
Okay, can you press the report?
Oh, actually. Well, it is a totally secluded spot, very nice little place back in there, and it's true, nobody will ever see it. Um, and so therefore there's, I don't see any complaint or problem with it, but I do see, they, I mean, I think they're taking a, a pitched roof and backing it back onto a very low pitched roof. It looks like looking for real troubles with maintaining the roof there, we maintain the leak. But I mean, that's really not a planning board issue, and I hate the siding on the thing, and I hate to look at the whole thing, but it's fine.
Thank you, Eric. Shannon, would you like to add to that?
I, I guess there's really not much to add. I mean, you said it's being tacked on, and I think it is being tacked on, and it will appear to be tacked on. Um, the other additions, the two other additions, there was an attempt to marry them with the existing house. I mean, the windows have divided lights, the roof slope is the same. On the proposed addition, an attempt was made, I believe, to depart entirely from the historical structure and its additions. You have a different slope on the roof, you have a different material on the roof, you have very narrow windows with no divided lights. I mean, it looks like a contemporary, a very contemporary addition. And it is in a secluded area, and it is totally out of sight from neighbors.
Thanks, C I B.
Good evening, and the C I B has not found any critical issues regarding proposed addition to the existing structures. Since the addition will be connected to an earlier nonoriginal structure, the original eighteenth century house will not be disturbed. Now, I spoke with Nancy Kelly on the phone about the project, and she said, well, the house is now part of the National Historic Registry. There is hardly any information at all found at the Rhinebeck Historical Society, the historic libraries, so there's really nothing that any, like the C I B or any group could say to, to, regarding restricting any construction on this project. Right, it is secluded, it's far removed from road sale, so the C I B has no issues with this project.
Thank you. Anyone on the public to speak to this one? Any for the rest of the members of the planning board?
Just a comment, I think. Well, was the first addition not on? We would probably have more comments about what was going on. But since the first addition was there, and I think made major impact to the historic house, that's a redundant, and I really think this addition going on is a little import to the historic character of the original. I think if the sequence were different, I'd be raising some other concerns, but I don't see any of this part.
There is nothing further. This was a type two action under secret, therefore we would like to close the public hearing. I have your motion.
Uh huh.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we will go right through the application for site plan approval. We approve the application as depicted by the authorized describing the site plan drawing supporting that condition as cited above. And the chair is authorized to stamp and sign the site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of low conditions, submission of the above cited drawings in the form and number specified, in consideration of filing distribution requirements, and including all the required stamps and certifications, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to town of Rhinebeck related through due processing of the section. I have your motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
I will pull the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Melody? Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We have one more public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Ryan Gett House, Minnetes. This is to put a swimming pool, approximately a hundred meters below, a different historic structure. And, um.
I have some more comments to get to, but please.
I'm, I'm going to try to get Melody to talk.
Well, thank you again for your time. My name is Ryan Manning. I'm a design landscaper, architecture, representing the Minnetes family, and, um, our proposal is for a swimming pool, an eighteen by thirty eight swimming pool, an automatic cover. And the pool has been placed, you can see the house in the existing barn. There's a large Norway's tree straight to the east of the proposed pool, with the idea that it was screened from the road. And we're also showing the privacy, or sorry, the pool fence around the pool area. Again, the kind of time and the character of the historic nature of the property, there's a split rail fence with a wire mesh attached to it to be pool coat. And you can see the gate locations here, we have access, access gates, as well as a smaller gate for access from the house for foot traffic. And the pool equipment has been located on the north corner of the existing barn, and that'll have a small privacy fence, again, to screen the pool from it and also reduce noise. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Richard denied the site visit. Richard, would you want to?
Uh, the property is beautiful, very well maintained. Swimming pool is put just far enough away from the house, so it's not even a back room to look from the house, which was very nice. It's a, the road itself screens quite well, I think, from the swimming pools. I see that's. The only reason we were there is because it's, is it historic?
It's a, yes, it is a historic structure.
They did a very nice cap site.
I agree, I think it's a beautifully set up design, and the pool is very pleasant on the property. And I don't see how it's going to maybe have an impact on anything else. Very well. C I B?
Hi again. Current board from the C I B did a second site visit and found no issues with the structure.
Very good. Anyone in the public here to speak to this application? Okay, uh, once again, this is type two action under secret. Whoa, hello.
Nancy, it's a short again.
Oh, okay. Give it down, it's story. Okay, I have received the application. There's, there's this dislocation. According to builder's structure, due to form, circa nineteen sixty-six, this building contains stone in the basement of seventeen thirty-one, and is routinely built as a one year dugout, it's easy to say there are many alterations to the structure in the neighborhood. For proposed addition, Richard, that's four. It's not an issue. It's an issue of building, of building, of building, of building, of building, of building. Um, this is on, after the board, this is, I don't think this is, you know, this isn't.
The wrong one.
This is the one for seventeen.
Uh, this was the one for who? Oh. So we're good.
It's good to have that.
Okay. Sir, can I hear a motion to close the public hearing? That's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, regarding the application for site plan approval, we approve the application as depicted by the authorized describing the site plan and drawing supporting that condition as cited above. Authorizing the chair to stamp and sign within six calendar months, the following things being taken care of. Submission of the above cited drawing in the form and number specified. Uh, should you please? Including there are the required stamps, seals and certifications, and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to town of Rhinebeck. I have your motion to approve.
One.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pardon me? A second, I should have said. Second?
Second.
Pull the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody? And I vote aye. Okay, all set to get a call?
Thank you.
Just in time for one.
The next procedure, we are on the procedural resolution. This one is Wayne Bailey. This is subdivision procedural draft resolution, Act on that, Wayne Bailey, approved for a minor two lot subdivision at one forty-five Wurdenburg, June of the year, Hunter's Side, RC five district. All right?
Yes.
So, I think that is a parcel on Wurdenburg Road. It has a house and a barn that was converted some years ago to an office for Rayden and John Lyons. And also, we, John Lyons, he's got an office. Wayne is spending most time here, and I think would probably like to sell the house. The house is here, sort of north of the head of the property with a small barn associated with it, and then this barn converted to office is a little bit further from the house. And this is an overall eight acre parcel. The intent is to divide it into one three acre parcel with the house, and then the remaining property will be with the barn, which is four point nine seven eight, roughly five acres. Um, there is a separate septic system for the, well, for the bar, the, for our office. It was put in at the time that building was converted to office and for the health department, I could get support at three thousand pairs. There are no immediate plans, but I think Wayne is looking for at some point to convert the septic rather than some. But the first thing to do is subdivide this. So the subdivision would come before the planning board anyway, but because of the, where the line has to go, right between the two buildings, as far as we can get, I mean, building, we are less than the required, we don't set back from each of the buildings to the proposed line between the two. So we, side yard variance, try the one above. From the zoning board, that application has been submitted, so regardless of any other issue, this would be an action to help the zoning board active. Uh, but, but again, the two lots would be in compliance with the standards for subdivision in this district of existing lot. And by configuring it this way, we're sort of keeping a buffer from nine G here, there's a tree line. And, and that will remain down here and sort of create this piece of land, which is really not available, will create a nice open space, maintain, I should say, a nice open space buffer between nine G and the buildings here in the faceboard of Wurdenburg. So that is the extent of the application for subdivision, your eyes.
Has the ZBA accepted the application for variances?
Uh, believe so, yeah.
They have accepted the application?
Yeah, in fact, we're on the agenda for later this week.
For a public hearing?
Uh, well, that would be the, I believe, just the initial submission, which they have not just.
Can we do a conditional acceptance of this application, provided the ZBA accepting the application for variances, if we can?
Yes, true.
Okay, good. All right then. Any questions for Warren?
Yeah, what, what's the setback requirement, and what do we end up with?
It's the side yards are fifty feet from the RC five.
Right, the side yards, I mean, the other, the buildings are all pre-existing, so whatever relationship they have to the road, you see in the remaining. But then what's, we're proposing to create new, not performing, is the setback between the two, simply because once we put a property line between them, they're both closer to the property line, it'll be required.
And this is RC five, so one of them will be not compliant in terms of?
No, because there's a provision in the zoning law for this district, that if you're subdividing a parcel, as long as each parcel is at least three acres, you can actually subdivide a six acre parcel into two three acre parcels. In fact, this is an eight acre parcel, and we're subdividing it into a three acre and five acre parcel.
It was a special condition when they put the new zoning law together, that they helped everyone zoning, for the people who had been in the three acre district. They put in a special provision that if they had a certain amount of acreage, I think it was, was it six or more?
Six.
Six or more, they could have subdivided into two, into two lots. Any questions for Warren?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the existing building, the post John Lyons's office, considered a commercial building?
Well, it's in a whole occupation, is what it was.
In a separate building, but it wasn't.
Whole occupation entails requires that the owner uses.
Well, the owner, this was a great, this was the Brad and Lyons, and Brad and Grant lived in the house.
Right, and upon her passing, that no longer applied, so I'm just curious. I'm asking because when we subdivide it, is it, is it just a home? It's a residential home?
It's in the residential district.
So it can't be subdivided and rented out?
I don't believe so, no.
And, and I know I've, I've actually spoken to him, and he's, is going to turn into his home, or, or, I think it's great. And I'm only asking because I just want to, I'm curious how that works.
Any other questions?
Did you say that the ZBA has already accepted?
They will be accepting them Wednesday night.
I thought that in order for us to hear it, that they had to already accept it, having just lived through the situation.
Similar, yes. Well, um, we.
It's normal, you know, you're seeing.
Yeah, can we do the, an acceptance resolution conditional on the ZBA?
Sure.
And we do it that way? And we do it that way?
I mean, you, if for some reason the application is not accepted by the ZVA at meeting on Wednesday night, then that's going to affect your ability to move forward subsequent to legal review. But if it is accepted, you know, if the applicant makes the choice whether they want to continue, whether they want to run applications in parallel.
Yeah, I know Ed has said for some reason, I was, I was under the same impression that if the variances are required for a project, the ZVA has to have accepted the application for those variances before the planning board had accepted the application for the project that requires those variances.
I'm not familiar with where that required.
I think it's art, I think it's probably art. Pass that on to us.
I, I like the fact that we're moving it forward with conditional, conditional upon acceptance of the application from the zoning board. I just, there's no reason for...
What's the potential negative impact of the proceeding?
There is, there is none. It's just that I have an application before the planning board that could not be heard tonight because it has not yet been accepted by the ZVA. So I'm confused, that's all I'm just attempting to clarify what the rule is.
I think it's what art had, for whatever reason, was art's way of doing it, and that's where we got that from. Because I remember saying the situation.
Clearly the practice that we have followed, we're all...
This might be an opportunity to improve it, but John's...
Yeah, I'll look into that. But normally, my understanding of it is that if the applicant, that both boards can, the key is that approval can't be granted, obviously, until, by any board, if seeker's required, till seeker's done. But otherwise, both applications can move in parallel. The applicant who's pushing the, with planning board application forward, assumes the risk if they want to do that, that the application may have to be changed at the planning board. If something happens, if the zoning board appeals, the variance is denied, or there are conditions that are attached to it by the zoning board appeals that requires changes to the plant, the site. So here, it's subdivision. It's possible that the ZVA could want to see the line get moved around, but that's up to them. But I don't see that accepting the application really makes a significant difference. Because they need to have that, they need to have the variance before you guys can approve it. And we, we're introducing, as we mentioned earlier in the evening, that we're introducing language now where your resolutions are incorporating rules and conditions by the zoning board.
So what I'll do is I will read the resolution after apologizing to Ed for not giving her an application on the agenda tonight.
I think it's much wiser to proceed as we are.
Okay. And so we're keeping up processes behind you, show up?
Well, I mean, I would apply, there are many different applications we got before this board, you know, site plan, special permit. This is a subdivision, which is really, the owner's primary focus is subdividing. But in order to subdivide, he needs a variance. I don't know if that's the same case of the application that Ed had proposed, but it seems to me that this is primarily a subdivision application. And while you can't take any action until the zoning board has to accept the application, but then they actually have to have their own hearing and make a resolution. And if they do approve the subdivision, whether the line is changed or otherwise, comes back to you, but you can't take any further action until the zoning board, I think, has done everything right now.
The risk is if the line gets changed or something like that, and planning board's had its public hearing already, it may end up being back in having another public hearing on a revised version of the plan.
I think so.
So I will proceed with the procedural resolution. Okay. Received files on the minor two lots subdivision, Act 145 Bordenburg Road in the rural countryside district, we accept the application prepared by Warren Smith. And survey documents approved by John Decker is adequate for initiating review by the planning board as advisors in public. We classify the proposed action as a type two action under seeker, which for environmental quality reasons precluding. We will schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 15th at...
6:30.
6:30. And we delegate planning board members who and who?
Algo.
Richard, Eric. We conduct a field visit and report their observations. In accordance with county chapter nine, we will refer this to the conservation advisory board. And in accordance with section 239, general legal law, we can do the application with the county department, planning, and account development. And we will authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at public hearing when may arise in basis of vocal reports, so your field visit and report, preparation of the working draft of approvals, or the planning board's consideration on October 15th, or as may be needed at time. Could I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just make sure that the ZVA gives you an acceptance. Okay, next is an introduction of the project by Patty Magdalanto, for the rear deck, a tiny, massive property with a wetland, or it was, it's definitely similar in a, about the zone of the wetland. Michael, we just want to sort of tell people what you can do.
So I was happy tonight when I saw all those people here. I thought that they were very interested in my deck. I didn't know that they were a little blob ledge. Keep going, buddy. So our building that was, was not accepted immediately because we were in a wetland district. And so from the corner of my building to where the stream is, it's 51 feet away. And in addition to the stream being 51 feet away from our house, it also falls away over 12 feet. The stream is in a ravine. So it's really hard to see how that stream could kind of impact a 14 by 19 foot deck that you want to lay on that poor house, that isn't really visible from the road at all. So that's, that's our, our question.
And is basically the deck just to put our foot in?
Mm-hmm. Or foot in? Yep. For, for concrete piers.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, the only reason they're here in front of us is because of the intrusion for the wetland.
Michael?
I'm sorry?
The only reason they're here is because of the intrusion of the wetland.
Correct. Into the buffer of the wetland. And what we've done in the past, and we did with another thing, just was a little bit in the buffer also, we didn't go through the whole public hearing process and things like that, since it just didn't seem to make any sense. And we very often just approve the wetland for something that's been sort of de minimis used. I have a procedural resolution here to delegate two members to the site, just to ascertain whether or not there's any reason in the world to go further with any additional flag and anything like that. I spoke with Karina from his CAD, and she felt that was a good way to handle this as well. I don't have the public hearing scheduled here because I don't really believe there's any public interest in this particular deck. They were here for the wetland, not this deck. So what I was going to put forward to you is to have two people across the CAD, the site visit, take a look, come back and report to the planning board at our October 1st meeting, whether you feel a further review or anything is necessary. And if not, other thing that was issued at that time, if that sounds okay with you guys.
I'd like to go. That falls within the one mile radius of my activity.
I'd like to go.
Okay, you guys want to... Let me read you though. Is that processus? Processus. Process sound acceptable to you, not having a public hearing, just going this way, taking a look and seeing? Given the description of the property down to 12 foot.
Why don't you make a motion to proceed that way?
Okay. Okay. Here's what I have. Classify the proposed action as type two under seeker. The term areas of public interest to be served, and the public hearing and things of such will not be conducted on this application. Delegates Richard and Eric to do the site visit. And we will also refer to the CAD, and I think Karina was interested in looking at it. I assume we're sent you to the county planner, 239, I'm not sure if they want to see this. And authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at public hearing on may arise in basis of, there won't be a public hearing. On may arise in basis of the site visit, you guys are going to do it. Authorizing the, a draft approval resolution for our consideration on our October 1st meeting, or as may be needed at time. Could I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
This is a situation that came up in the volume conversation, about when it's referred to the public and making them aware of the waivers that we, that we have attached to this. Maybe for a little, they don't want to know that, and we're sometimes looking for something, so we have to factor in.
Does, are you guys using a mapping tool that's, can you?
They're a pro, I don't know.
Yeah, you are.
I put in there once they give it to me.
Okay, okay. And you have the MOU, the memorandum of understanding between Brian Jackson and the county that exempts subdivision?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Michael, you want to get in touch with Richard and Edna Garrett about the site visit and go let Karina know and help them out, make a deal? And we'll be back for October 1st.
Super. Thank you.
Is anyone here from McNally?
I hope for subdivision McNally Division.
Okay.
Well, this is, this is for a subdivision and then a lap line alteration of the Slate Quarry Road between McNally and Northern Duchess Bible Church. The project is to subdivide out a portion of the Northern Duchess Bible Church, which Mr. McNally and Ms. Martin will then consolidate with their existing property.
So, yeah, my name is Denise Martin, I have some McNally. I'm also here representing the Northern Duchess Bible Church. They own, they are next to neighbors, and they own 109 acres. We bought 12 acres from them two years ago, which you guys approved. We want by additional 32 acres of that, also adjacent. What did, and what did you say for?
Is this behind the sugar shack?
Sugar shack.
Wasn't there a...
They built the sugar shack.
People's here, that was proposed at one time?
Yeah, we were.
Okay.
We still are.
I'm excited about that.
Michael stepped out, so are there any questions for, any more?
So basically, you can purchase additional, how many acres?
We're on, we're under contract to purchase an additional 32 acres.
32 acres.
Adjacent behind, to the sidewalk.
And that'll make your total holdings to what?
About 50.
50.
Nice.
Uh, it is minor lot subdivision lot consolidation.
And you say they have over 100 acres, if they're...
Yeah, and they're selling us 32.
Perfect.
What does that property use for now?
We have a sheet floor.
Oh, okay. That's just that big lot right there. They're 109 acres.
Oh, they're 109 acres, it's just well there.
So no, no structures on it?
Nothing.
Is it cleared or wooded or...
Uh, there's all, there's paths to it, there's, we're walking, running to it.
The previous owners, before they, so the stewards, now he had trails all through the property, and, you know, he basically just loved the way it was, just leaving it, just as sort of a refuge.
And we still maintain it.
No more grazing land for the sheet?
Uh, you know, it's pretty expensive to turn it into a field.
Kind of think so.
As I'm learning for the other 12 acres.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. I'm using it, and then to enjoy it.
Okay, a quick resolution here. We are, we are accepting the application, supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board advised in supply of the public. We are classifying as an unlisted action under seeker, which coordinated with our department to be included. We will schedule a public hearing on Monday, October 15th at...
6:40.
6:40. And no progression about having any notification at all.
Okay.
And, let's see. We also need to have two planning board members go out and take a look. Algo, would you like to go out with me? And Melody, I guess. We will go out to the site visit. We also refer to the conservation advisory board. And subdivision, subdivision we do now, can we refer subdivision to the county? Is that the one they didn't want to sit?
No.
We don't do that?
Check it out.
Okay. We'll go to the county if they want to. And we will authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing when may arise in basis of the above cited site visits, provision of the working draft of approvals, resolutions for the planning board's consideration on October 15th, or as may be needed at time. Could I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will get in touch again about the site visit. Okay, and now, and next I have Philip Williams representing Ronald Zeitz, Ronald Zeitz, 228 Stone Church Road. This is a subdivision, which we have the results in a deep situation.
Please excuse the puny little map. It's kind of hard to get, surveyors and engineers to get out there and do something because everybody's busy. Twenty-four years ago, I built my home on Stone Church Road, 201 Stone Church Road. And I raised my family there, and then became friends with the neighbors. And we'd like to, my son recently got married, that's his wife Megan, and Philip Jr., and then Ronald Zeitz is the owner of the property. We approached him about purchasing a piece of land, so we built my summer house, and that's what we're here for.
And it's basically the subdivision with the five acres out of Mr. Zeitz's property, which he will then sell to you?
Yes. Well, he'll sell to me, so.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I'd like it. Thank you.
Well, here we go. We accept the application as prepared by Philip Williams and survey documents with early trials of votes, as adequate provision reviewed by the planning board as advisors in public. We classify it as an unlisted action under seeker. We will schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 15th at...
6:45.
6:45. And work with Gretchen on the posting requirements, and she'll show you after two weeks. Delegates, planning board members who and who?
Algo. Algo.
Woody and Edna?
Edna.
And they will do the site visit and report back. We will also refer to the conservation advisory board. And we'll refer to, that's a subdivision. Oh, you'll see it through the working now. Very good. And authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at public hearing when may arise in basis of locally well-sighted field visit and thorough preparation of the working draft of approvals, resolution for the planning board's consideration on August 15th, 2018, or as may be needed at time. Could I have a motion to approve? Second? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay.
Your contact information sort of behind the door. You or your son, which one do you want to burn?
We're always together, so there's no doubt. Philip Williams?
Yeah, I got that.
Eight, four, five? Six, five, six? Eight, seven, six, six, seven?
Seven, six, six, seven.
Nope, I'll be there when you want.
Last but not the least.
Thanks, man.
Good luck. We have one more.
Charles Thompson, Price Road, left end of the left lane is being built. This is to authorize a 760 square foot addition to the single-family residence at 1600 Price Road in the rural countryside district. And I need you to describe exactly what's happening.
Uh, yes, so... Okay, so there's an existing 860 square foot house on this property that's within 100 feet from a pond, which is defaults into a federal wetland by definition there. And proposing a 760 square foot addition that thereby is also in that 100 foot buffer from the pond. But one of the things that we evidenced, I went out there and we did shots of... But one of the things that we evidenced, I went out there and we did shots of grades to try to clarify a little bit the topography. There's no superficial hydrologic connection, right, of water running from where the addition is to the pond or vice versa. There's literally naturally a berm that comes up about, about this high, kind of, and then it kind of runs down. But in all cases, pond's here, the berm's here, and the house is over here. So they're literally divided in a kind of an unusual way by this natural formation of earth. And that's, that's the main description of the property. No increase in number of bedrooms, so no impact to septic. And could I ask, answer any other questions?
Questions for the applicant? One of the things that I think some of the members have wondered, we don't have any topo's to really demonstrate for us the difference in the different elevations in reference to this addition, this project.
Um, we, the spot grades that I took, that in my, I'm proposing are sufficient to present what I said, which is a definitive separation hydraulically between these two locations, where nothing from one would run to the other. Providing full contours, we thought was economically out of scale with what we're proposing here in place. The spots do convey the story, even though they don't show every contour. So that's the approach we took.
You could also pull it up like Google, and you can see, it's very obvious that there's quite an elevation change.
What I do know, we have, we do have requests for a waiver from Evan Tuvok, delineation of a flagging of the weapon with a topo. And that's for the planning board to decide if they think that's appropriate.
Is it topo or requirement on the site?
Survey is generally required, and topography is...
Part of the survey.
Yeah, it's generally, you guys for a waiver from that.
Is the topo a mandatory survey?
I think, well, the topo is only necessary if we do, because the only real reason we need it is to determine whether or not there is any problem with looking on, or dealing with...
I think it's reasonable in this application to want to know those elevations. Question is, looking at it, do we really need them to go through the specs?
Is that, and that's why I think before we can decide on a waiver, we should have a site visit.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, a site visit ought to determine that.
So, do you need a survey, does it have to be...
The point of it is they probably do wave.
Do we need a survey as well? That's what I'm asking.
It can wave requirements for site visits, we do have that authority. But I think we need to justify it, we do it, we need to justify why we're doing it. And I think until we have a site visit, we can't, I think we should wait on that particular aspect until there's a site visit, that's just my feeling. Are there any other questions we can...
I think we talked that you were going to be checking with the county to see if there were any surveys on file.
Um, yes, I incorporated meets and bounds, but I'm not a surveyor, so I can't attest. I'm not certified, but I am faithfully representing actually from the deed and a legal survey, the meets and bounds boundaries, which we did not have before.
Which we do now.
Which we do now, yep. And as you'll see when you go out there, the, you know, I've studied enough to not get into it further as wetland delineation, you know, the identification of the plants and the like, and all sorts of things related to wetlands. What you'll see, you'll see the edge of the pond is pretty crisp. There is not, there is the wetland over here or not, it is the pond, but you'll see that when you go out there.
Anything else before I proceed to the last resolution of the unit? We accept the application supporting draft, as adequate for initiating review by the planning board's advisors in public. Classifying the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, which in further environmental quality review, under seekers precluded. Note that the applicant is applied for a waiver from the requirement of the wetland that is dominated by a licensed representative of the weather dated August 21st, 2018, from Lady Garrett, Mary Garrett, on behalf of Charles Helsel. Schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 15th at six...
Fifty.
And you'll speak to Gretchen about the notice of... Who would like to do the site visit?
Alba.
Eric?
Alba.
Eric? And report back, and I think the key here is whether or not we need to prove the information related to the wetland, something related to the project and the weapon. We will refer this to the Conservation Advisory Board. Uh, let's see, I'm referring, I believe this property is, I don't believe it's in it. It's not in the ALWRP, so we don't need to do that. Okay, and we will refer it to the Duchess County Planning Department, where we do a prior opinion. And what we can do is authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented, the preparation of the working draft of approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on October 15th, 2018, or as may be made at time. Realizing that we have the issue of the waiver, and what the planning board decides to do based upon the site visit report, I think we'll determine whether we need to continue the public hearing beyond what we're going to have on the 50th. If indeed the planning board wishes further information, delineation, or anything else. Could I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, that's the last thing I have on the agenda.
For scheduling the site visit?
No, I think you'll...
Look, I'm always...
Quite all right, for scheduling the site visit, how does that logistically take place? Because you're going to contact me for Gretchen, I'll contact you.
Yeah, I'm very well.
Right, because he's going to need a coordinate view. So you want, you have the truck's number on the application, I think?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay, um, is there any further business that anyone is just going to help us with?
I just have a simple question. I'm looking at this large plan here, and it shows the elevations on it. There's got to be some sort of an automated program out there that has this information, because I'm sure the surveyor didn't do all these content.
I imagine there's all the topo maps and things like that.
Yeah, they have some breaks that they self-work, and they take their own shots. Yeah, it's kind of beyond their...
I mean, there is some available, or selected, or...
So, yeah.
Five plus. The word that's up is five plus, and not certified, but five percenters.
I know there's anything on partial access that's actually certified as...
Right, they don't certify it.
But it's definitely helped.
Yeah, and it's five percenters. But my, my spots, I'm certified.
All right.
Yeah, and there's, you know, unless there was an extreme mobile, it does that total story, it's just not, it doesn't jump out. Okay, thank you.
Would you give them a reset? Nope?
I don't know, there's no more motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.